This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call the July 17, 2021 special meeting on Saturday to order at 8:55 a.m. Meeting called to order. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda for today? If not, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the agenda for today?
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda for this special meeting today.
So moved by Counselor Williams. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Webb. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Susan Carey.
I will invite Susan in.
Good morning, Susan.
Hi, Susan.
Hello, how are you all?
Good.
So I'll start off saying that this is a public meeting, so I do have my recorder on where you are not being videoed. Morning again, Susan.
Thank you for stepping up and coming forward to participate in the interview process today. Glad to have you. And we have a set of 10 questions that we'd like to ask you. And try to keep your responses to five minutes. We do have about a 45-minute timeframe on this interview process. So I'm going to go ahead and begin and ask the first question, and then we'll kind of take turns to finish out the 10.
Is it all right if I take out a piece of paper so I can write notes if I have?
Absolutely. And then during each question, Susan, if any council member chooses to ask a question or comment on your response, we'll do it then. And then we'll have time at the end after all the questions are complete that you can have a closing statement if you wish.
Thank you.
Okay. Question number one, tell us about yourself and some of your community activities.
All right. So I am Susan Wagner. I moved to Vernonia in 2006. I had been searching for a home with my husband, kept finding houses in Vernonia. It was like we were drawn to it. And I'd never been here. I was still in Colorado and flew out, did a drive around, I think I went 300 miles that day, came up over the rise into Vernonia coming up from '26. And I just had this feeling of home. So I honestly felt I was drawn to Vernonia. We found a home. It fell through. It was the one across from Storage Two. And I, it was flooded in 2007. We looked everywhere, found the Keenan's old home, which had just gone up on the market. One fell through. We put in the offer. We were in, I think, 17 days later. I mean, it was, it just, everything fell into place. I immediately settled in, got our daughter at the school, went to work between 2006 and early 2007 with the school district as a special ed needs aide. Loved it. That position ended. It was a temporary position. Kind of went back to my eBay or continued my eBay business that I've had for many, many years. And then the flood happened. And I knew with my skill set and my knowledge of having gone through the California earthquake and done all those repairs and helped people with that, that I could help. So I showed up here at City Hall, went to the town hall, and then came to City Hall and volunteered. And basically, that turned into a real job with Community Action Team, helping with management and the grant management of the flood recovery. That was my first introduction to being involved with Vernonia as a community member. After a while, I joined the, I did work at the schools as a volunteer. I helped with their STEM program early on. And then an opportunity came to join the Planning Commission. And I thought that was a good introduction to getting into what was going on in the community. I had been involved with the Vernonia Economic Development Committee when they got restarted. And then as soon as we had the flood, and I was very, very involved in that, it made more sense for me to be involved with that than the Economic Development Committee. Again, Planning Commission, I was on there for six years. I ran for council while I was on the Planning Commission. And you cannot hold a Planning Commission position and a city council position at the same time. So that is why I dropped off of that and onto city council. I was also a member of the Budget Committee for many, many years. I think total eight years or nine, I have it in my documentation. And I still, I still contribute, I tend to contribute financially because I'm not an extremely physical donor. I don't, I don't have a lot of strength physically, but I feel that we have the capacity to contribute financially, and we do contribute to the senior center, the food bank, and other things as they come up.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Number two, based on your experiences or general awareness of the city, what do you consider to be the strengths and challenges for the city?
So I think was evidenced by the flood. The strength of this city is its community members. When something happens, I have never seen a community come together as cohesively as Vernonia. And it does not matter if you like the guy next door, if you hate the guy next door, everybody helped everyone. It was just the most remarkable thing I'd ever seen in my life. And it continued for a long time through that period. And I think honestly, the people of this community, whether they're longtime residents, whether they've got their family roots here, or whether they are new to town, everybody seems to love Vernonia and is very passionate about it. And I think that's the strength of our community. The weakness of our community, I'd like to address two ways. Financially, as a, as a community, being rural and being a very small community with a very small tax base, that's a very, very great challenge. It's a weakness. Not through anyone's fault, it's just the way rural areas run. The other weakness I think we have is more, again, the people, we try very hard to get along, most of us. I mean, I think, I think generally we do. When things are going well, people get very invested in their own positions. And I think it's a weakness, and I don't think it's just Vernonia, I think it's everywhere, that we, we tend to not look broadly at situations, we tend to only look from our own perspective. And that's something that is a weakness, not just in Vernonia, but everywhere.
Susan, you talked about a weakness being financial. Is it because you think the city needs more money?
I think every community needs more money.
To do what with it?
There's infrastructure that needs to be addressed, there's opportunities to improve, for instance, Main Street, the businesses, the frontages, the parks, the, the entirety of any community can always use more funds. Right now, we happen to be in an upswell of available funding in a way because of ARPA, you know, the, the current recovery plan. That's not always going to be there. And Vernonia has done a remarkable job financially. I mean, we have done amazing things. But there are things that our community has done that not inappropriately, in fact, I think very appropriately said, we need our sewer system fixed. So we've done the job, we've taken out the loans and done the work. A lot of communities wait for grants to occur so that that does not put that burden on to the taxpayers and the community. And while I don't disagree that we did the right thing, it would have been nice to have grant money to pay for that instead of having a loan. And that's what I mean by money. Everything always comes back to money as far as those physical things that could be improved. So if you're asking, do we need more money? Yes, we always need more money here.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Your turn, JR.
Yeah.
Number, we at number three.
Three.
We're going to count our blockways this time.
That's.
What would you consider the most important issue that poses a challenge to the city?
The most important?
The most important.
I know it's kind of hard because you want me to pick one.
Right. Well, that's, that's a fair question. Can you repeat the question?
Sure. What would you consider the most important issue that poses a challenge to the city?
I think currently, the most important challenge to Vernonia as a community is, is growth. I feel like I've answered the how many wishes, you know, what do you want for your wishes? I want another, you know, I want unlimited wishes. The challenge of doing what we need to do as a community, the growth, it has to, it encompasses so many things. It encompasses responsibly addressing how we add more properties in. It addresses how we allow people to build. It addresses how we support those people with the infrastructure to build those homes. And growth is important to a community because that's how you keep improving. If you become stagnant and stop growing, you die as a, as a community. And we've seen Vernonia go through that in the past, where things stopped and downtown was empty, not completely, but there were many, many storefronts that were empty. That was because our growth had stagnated at that point. People had left. So we'd actually shrunk in size. That is, that's a challenge, is how do you manage that? How do you encourage it, but do it responsibly? And I believe that is truly our biggest challenge at this time. Yes, sir.
Could you be specific about an area where you think that through better leadership we could improve something that's already happening? I mean, when you say that, do you have a particular in mind, or is that just a general thought?
Well, I don't believe characterizing it as leadership, lacking leadership is correct. I think that we, we have a great leadership here. I think that your staff at the city is very, very engaged and very, very smart. And I deal with a lot of cities. So I've seen, I've seen the caliber of our staff is equal to the best cities I've worked with. City Council has a very broad knowledge base, and I think that's an asset also. If you're asking me, is there any one specific thing I see that's lacking, I would really not be willing to talk about that right now because I don't know. That's something I would really have to think about for a moment.
Let me, let me rephrase the question. Is there a particular area in town that you have watched kind of spin its wheels and not progressed the way that you thought that it should because there was a lack of leadership going into it that has made it stall out? I'm not trying to make this.
No, I, no, I understand. I'm trying, I'm trying to think. So, so there's a couple of areas that I've seen that have been a challenge as far as growth as it relates to bringing in outside money, tourism. Not having a Chamber of Commerce is kind of important or has been an issue. Yes, we have the Intercultural Society, and they're great. They do wonderful events, but there isn't that outreach that occurs when you are a chamber and, and that intuitive way of bringing in people. People don't look for Intercultural Society when they're looking for places to visit. They look for Chamber of Commerce, and that's how that link becomes apparent to people when they're searching on the internet. And, and the reality is, work is slow, growth is slow, proper growth is slow. You don't want people just jumping in. And so I don't think that, I don't think that overall there's been any roadblocks to growth and improvement in the community. Again, money. If you had a million dollars, we'd be able, 1.1 or 2.1, whatever it is, we'd be able to do all the streets. But we don't have that kind of money. So we have been doing those improvements and that growth properly within our, within our capacity or within the city's capacity.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd follow up on that one real quick. Do you think the Louisiana projects went 100% correct up there with the lack of sidewalks?
I don't think that that is an appropriate question to ask because I am not fully familiar with it or, and have not been provided all of the information to discuss that. I'm not a counselor. I don't get full packets. I do get full packets, I don't print full packets, and I would really have to look into that before I could answer that question.
Let me rephrase that. Have you been up there?
No.
Okay. Well, right now, the city's talking about switching to mandatory sidewalks. If you build a new home, what do you think of that proposal? Just from a citizen's aspect, I'm not asking you anything about council stuff. It's part of this whole growth thing.
You are correct. There are guidelines in place and processes that have to be followed, and I'm giving a very bureaucratic answer to that question.
Yeah, I want a straight answer is what I'm looking for.
I believe there are areas, personally, and I don't, I don't know Louisiana well enough to tell you if it needs or does not need sidewalks. I don't know what there is or is not there currently. Let me talk about my street. My street is Alder Street, and Alder has zero sidewalks. If someone were to build a new home, which there's no room along there, but let's say they did, and had to put in a sidewalk, it would not make sense unless, it just wouldn't make sense. There is nothing inappropriate to a, in my mind, to a rural community road that does not have a lot of people on it or traffic on it. If it isn't a safety issue, I don't see that that is a, something to be imposed on all of the members already there who already have existing homes. However, in addition to that, the other side of it is, there are areas that are being built as new areas. New homes generally, when I've been looking for homes, are very pretty and platted and neat and tidy and already laid out with all of those things. They put in the roads, they put in the sidewalks, and then they build the homes. I am presuming from your question that Louisiana is being built with all new homes. Are they interspersed with existing homes?
No. Well, a little bit, but mostly no.
I feel that I would really have to look at each individual situation to make that determination because there are some places, objectively or subjectively, whichever way you want to look at it, that it makes sense to put in sidewalks. And there are some areas that it doesn't. And I would honestly have to look at it at a case-by-case basis.
Thank you for your answer.
Okay, we're going to move on. Question number four.
All right. You've given us some of your background in your application and in this discussion. What do you feel are the strengths that you can bring to this council?
Can I peek at my answer? That's interesting. So the strengths that I can bring to this council? I would say objectivity. I don't have any, I don't have any biases, I don't have any agendas. I bring a little, I bring experience. I have continued even before this position was open. I continue to either attend in person or online, all of the meetings and all of the Budget Committee meetings. I feel that I am invested in this home, in my town, this is my home. When people ask me where I'm from, I say Vernonia with pride. And I believe that I really bring a, a broad view of the world. I've lived in small towns, I've lived in large towns, I've lived in huge cities, and I've worked in all of those as well. And I think I bring all of those attributes to my potential role as city council.
Thank you.
Okay. Number five, what do you see as the three most important issues facing the city of Vernonia in the next two years?
Next two years.
Three issues.
Three issues.
Important.
Yep. So I did, I do have three that I, I think I addressed them in my application as well. Responsible growth, living wage, jobs, and infrastructure. I think all three of those are very critical to the, the town. And over the next two years, particularly with people, I think, looking for new places that they want to reside in order to be able to have the best quality of life. They don't want to live in cities anymore. A lot of people with younger children or even people my age are looking for places that they can feel safe in and comfortable and part of a community and where they can live and grow and, and invest in their communities. I've seen a lot of people who have been coming into town are really excited. They want to know, what do we have? What can we do? You know, can I get involved in things? But there was that, in order to get people here, we need to be able to provide them the infrastructure. You know, they need to, I'm not talking about electricity 24/7, 365 days a year. That is, that is one of the things that people have to recognize when they move to a rural area, there are going to be challenges. Things are not the same as living in the middle of Portland where everything's underground and everything's safe. And even then, it's not. But we need to, we need to manage that growth and be responsible about it, not simply, let's put up 600 homes right now or whatever the number is. And, and make sure that, that we are doing it in a way that we are going to be able to support all those people. The infrastructure goes along with that growth, is it's very important to be able to make sure that all of those people who are now coming in have water, have electricity, have sewer access with a sewer system that can handle it all. And living wage jobs, that is something I know that has been worked on for a long time. And even if we're not able to provide them in town, be able to make sure that we are able to support those people who do choose to move here with the access to those living wage jobs. I would love to see more, more industrial things here. Not industrial like smoke stacks, but like when we had photo solutions. They were a great employer, and they had a heck of a pay for our residents, and they employed, I think, 16, 17 people with truly living wage jobs. So encouraging some of that to come in and through that new economic development potential program, I think that that's a good way of addressing it.
Speaking of living wage jobs, Columbia County is currently working on a biodiesel plant that's going to provide really good living wage jobs right here in our county. Would you, if it was up to you, would you vote yes on that?
I am willing to state that based on information I have learned to date and having been part of the, one of the Economic Development Commissions that was, that the county had implemented for a short time, I was invited to be one of those members, I did support it at that time. I don't know why that would change unless there was something truly dangerous or inappropriate that started to come to light. But from what I know to date and the information I've been provided, I like the idea.
Okay. Thank you. The current situation in our country is we're headed towards wind and solar, all-electric cars, things like that. Can you envision Vernonia being a place where we could sustain ourselves if we went all electric? Do you think that is part of the, the future of Vernonia?
I, I believe, and there have been studies done in Vernonia, there was at one time a great interest in bringing a program that would have basically individual solar, wind, turbine-type things in between like four houses. This was probably in 2009 or '10. There was a lot of discussion about that, particularly downtown. It made sense because there's four, you know, blocks are easy to do when you're in a city to help supplant some of the, and offset some of the electric feed type, direct feed needs of, of the community and the homes. I think that our area in town, within the downtown area particularly, the truly built-out areas, would not be unreasonable to have a great deal of natural solar, wind production of electricity. It would have to be very, very carefully planned, and I think you definitely would have to have a great deal of backup. I know that they are talking about these new flow batteries, which are very, very large and really can retain an incredible amount of. flow batteries, which are very, very large and really can retain an incredible amount of energy inherent within them to be used at a later date or later time in the day. They are very safe and they are developing them now to be a more universally available product to be exactly for that. You have solar, you have wind, you can't necessarily use that immediately, so it's stored. Again, these flow batteries is a new development that's come up in the past decade, but really, really being worked on now and actually implemented in China of all places very successfully.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Number six. In the last few years, the city council has averaged over 60 meetings each year. There will be, also be additional meetings for boards and commissions. You will be expected to attend. Are you willing to commit the time needed to attend most of these meetings?
Well, simple answer is yes. I think it is incumbent upon whoever decides that they want to be a counselor, whether they're running or being appointed, that there's a lot of work. It's not just coming to two meetings a month. There's a lot of additional workshops, there's research, there's trainings, there's reading your packets, there's being prepared for meetings. So yes, and absolutely, I, I will, if appointed, absolutely have all the time. The one thing I will say is I have attended meetings when I have been out of town, even before we had this wonderful new setup, which is great, the call-in setup. I, for instance, with city, with school board, I would call in to somebody's cell phone. I've done it here as well. So yes, I do.
Thank you.
JR.
Okay, number seven. City councillors sometimes have to make unpopular decisions. How will you handle those who criticize you or a decision you have made?
Being a councillor or being a school board member or being a parent or being being a human being means you sometimes make decisions that are not popular. I, I have never looked at my role in leadership as needing to be anybody's friend. So I don't make decisions based on if someone is or is not going to like what I'm making a decision about. I also believe that you have to be very, very responsible in your decisions and look at the very, very broad ripple effect of that decision. Just because the question may be a yes or no does not mean that there aren't other things that it will affect. I'm, I internalize my my discomfort when having to do that, but then that's gone in a day or two. It, I've heard things from people, they don't, they don't like my decisions, they may not like my politics. This isn't a political position, it's a position of responsibility and leadership of a community. And sometimes leaders have to make uncomfortable and then decisions when it's for the good of the community as a whole.
Thank you.
Number eight. What would you like to accomplish as a councilman?
I don't have a specific goal of accomplishing any one thing. My goal, if I were to be appointed to the position, is to just keep the city moving forward. We have made such good strides, the city has and the council has over the past eight years, bringing the city back from really potentially tipping the wrong way. I mean, potentially the city could have just fallen apart. It would have become a community of everybody just living here with what they had. And I think over the last eight years, and six years, four years, two years, we have continued to move forward as a city, improving, being more interesting, being more accessible, being more desirable of a place to be. And I think that's been with the leadership of council and the staff. And I just, I think being part of that is amazing. Just being part of that team that continues to improve Vernonia is just, is for me, my goal. And bringing, bringing my experience into the mix.
Can you envision something that you think is holding us back? You mentioned you think we're going forward and doing well, but is there some kind of an impediment that you can envision that if it was removed, we could accelerate that progress?
I can't think of anything specific. I think that leadership in this community has been very wise in how they've been moving forward. I think that decisions that are made by council and staff and as a team, both council and staff together have been really well thought out and, and implemented. I, I don't see that there's anything holding you, us back or the city back, not us, I'm not including.
Except for money, right?
Except for money. Money is always the, the answer when it comes to some things. Not love, but the rest of it is, is all about money. I mean, that truly is. I mean, if you want, if you want an answer, yeah, money. But other than that, I don't see that there's anything really getting in the way. And I think that there's a lot a lot as it relates to communication getting better. And I don't know, I think that really the city is doing a really good job. It's moving forward responsibly, and I just would like to see that continue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Do you have the time to devote to this job?
Is that?
Question number nine.
Okay, yes, I do. I thought that kind of sounded like question number.
It is, very similar.
Okay, yes, I do. I have the advantage of working for an organization that if I have things that are outside of the time that I need to be able to devote during normal city council hours, absolutely. I mean, I've taken off for trainings, I've taken off for meetings, and I, I am able to have my work accommodate other work, such as city council, yes.
JR. To be honest with you, Susan, we had, while you were on council, we had a hard time setting up work sessions due to your schedule. And my question is, how is that going to change? Because I know you're on the school board and a lot of other stuff going on. So I'm just wondering how that would change in the future going forward if you were to be back on.
I would question that statement because my, I was always available at six or earlier. I would always say that I could come in earlier.
I'm just talking about dates. We would sometimes just say, why don't we start with Susan? What date are you available? Because they'd go around, around, around.
I would, I would like specific because in my recollection, that was, I was not the person that was the challenge. On occasion, I've had a vacation. But that's the only time it and second Thursday of every month, that was the only time I ever had a conflict except for grand jury, which will be over in six months. So I, I appreciate your comment, but I'm not sure it's accurate.
Well, that was just my general feeling. Sometimes when we're trying to schedule work sessions, it seemed like you often had conflicts. So I cannot give you a specific date unless I went back and listened to every tape, but we don't have time for that. So I was just kind of wondering if your schedule had cleared more.
Again, I don't recall my being the impediment to scheduling. And my dates are very flexible, except for first Tuesday, second Tuesday during the day. And third Thursday evening, or second Thursday evenings of every month.
Okay, thank you.
Grant. Okay, number 10. What do you think about expanding the urban growth boundary to add more acreage to the city?
I do know that that is a project that is in process. I know that there's some properties that are being switched out to manage that at this time. I know that it's, in my opinion, important to be able to do because while the state identifies our buildable properties as, I think they, I think at one time a 25 or 40 year build out period, I don't believe that's accurate. I don't think it's appropriate to calculate some things as buildable land such as my property. I mean, I live on three quarters of an acre approximately. And that's included because there's enough space in there to add one or two units. The property across the street, they can put in, I believe, three new homes. And that's counted towards the urban, our buildable our buildable land. And I don't think that's fair because just because somebody has a very large yard that they love does not mean that they should have to count that as something that could be or will be built out. I think it's important for the city to have the opportunity to increase increase homes to increase its population and increase its tax base. And I think that's, again, responsible growth would enable us to be able to continue to do that. And it lends towards creating a more successful community as a whole.
In your visionary thinking, would, if we were to expand the city, would, would that kind of fill in the niche that you're talking about, about providing jobs, places where we could put in a place like photo solutions? Would that be part of your reason for wanting more area to build so that that dream of jobs could come true?
I actually believe that that is not a bad answer. So I don't, I personally don't believe that the living wage jobs need to be built within the city limits. I don't believe that you need to expand the urban growth boundary unless you want to capture that taxable component of it. I think the jobs are important because if you have people staying here, they're going to spend their money here. They're going to go to RNS, whether it's more expensive or not. They're going to shop in the shops in town when they can. They're not going to be leaving and as much and have the opportunity as much to purchase what they need out of town. I think it would be really wonderful for us to be able to expand the urban growth, but growth, excuse me, urban growth boundary in order to incorporate definitely the homes we would need for those people who are seeking those living wage jobs once hopefully our our community members are able to access those jobs as well. So should it incorporate areas to support industrial businesses like not street at the back? That would not be a that would not be a absolute in my mind. But if, if it were beneficial, I think it would be something that would be important to look at. Whether or not the government will ever agree to the city's opinion of what buildable lands are and should be is, is a completely different track, unfortunately.
Okay. Any other questions on number 10 or discussion? I think you've answered the questions very well. Thank you.
Thank you. My hands are still shaking. Interviews are always fun. I appreciate the honor, Joe, I'm all honest.
You know, I, I just was sitting here reflecting on this whole process and, and actually it's it's a really healthy process that we're, I mean, it's unfortunate we had, we have to fill a vacancy now, but looking at the positive end of it, this is a really good process, healthy process because I think it helps not only our whole city and staff. It, it's, it's a good reminder of why I'm sitting here and why we're here together. And so it's a good thing. I thank you for, if you're, you're sure welcome to make a closing statement. Then, and we thank you for your participation, Susan.
Well, thank you very much. I do appreciate the opportunity provided by allowing me to put in my application and accepting my application. I'm going to look at my statement to see if there's anything that's in here that I wanted to say that was not already covered. I didn't tell I care for things. So I will read this. This is a personal statement I've made before. And I think it's just a good wrap up. "I moved to Vernonia from Colorado with my husband and daughter in summer of 2006. We were drawn to Vernonia for its location, its people, and because we knew Vernonia would be a great place for our daughter to grow up. When the flood hit in December 20, on December 3, 2007, I knew I needed to step up and give back to my community that had become my chosen home. I showed up at city hall and volunteered to help, working sometimes 18 hours a day at the beginning of the emergency. I was hired by Community Action Team in January 2009 and continue to serve communities throughout Columbia, Tillamook, and Flats of Counties through that work. I firmly believe in investing in my community financially and physically. I've been very involved and active in Vernonia, assisting many different local groups and organizations through grant writing, committees, and fundraising activities. I worked at the schools as special education aide and paravolunteer. My broad and varied experience and background has served the community well when I was a member of the city council and planning commission and budget committee. I love being part of the solution, working with my neighbors, listening to my fellow community members, and helping Vernonia continue moving toward, forward in a sensible and level-headed manner. I've always believed you can't just say someone should do something without being willing to say, I'm willing to do something. And I would like to continue or at least have the opportunity to continue being in that position. Thank you very much."
Thank you for coming in, Susan. Thank you, Susan.
Look at that, 45 minutes.
Yeah.
Do you guys want to take a brief?
Are we closing the meeting, Darren?
If you guys are not going to discuss any further, we'll turn off the microphones and we'll recess.
We'll recess.
Okay, it's 10 o'clock. We are returning to meetings.
Okay.
Calling Donald Norman.
It didn't say we were recording. It just paused them.
Yeah, I just turned off the volume.
It's pretty loud.
Hello, Donald. This is Stephanie Borst.
Yes, Stephanie.
Hello, I have City Council here. Can you hear us okay?
And thank them for letting me do it over the phone since I'm not in Vernonia. And you might as well, Joseph, thank the other committee for letting me do it over the phone.
Will do.
Thank you.
So I have you on speakerphone. I want to let you know that you are being recorded because this is a public meeting.
Okay.
And I will hand over the reins to Mayor Hobart.
Okay.
Good morning, Donald. Can you hear me okay?
What? No, we're on that.
Are you okay? Well, good afternoon to you. Welcome to the interview process, and Donald, we have 10 questions we're going to ask you, and we're going to go around. I'll ask the first question, and we'll go around in order, and let the other council members ask you questions. We're trying to keep all the 10 questions to 45 minutes.
Okay.
So if you can keep that in mind on some of your responses, and then after, after each question, if a council member has a question or comment, we'll, we'll take those then, and then move on to the next question. So.
On something I normally don't do, so I'm not, I don't know that I will waste a bunch of time, so it shouldn't be too long.
And then if you want to include a closing statement after we're all done, that, that would be great, too, if you, if you choose to do that.
Okay.
So I'll start out with the first question. Tell us about yourself and some of your community activities.
So I've lived in Vernonia 59 years, attended grade school and high school in Vernonia, played sports for the Vernonia School District, worked in a gas station, worked as a mechanic and a logger, and back as a mechanic, kind of back and forth and whatnot. Put 23 years in for whole slogging until they decided they weren't going to log no more. I'd like to still be working there. But probably since about 2000, I've been in and out, and really in the last 10 years, real involved in what the council, going to the council meetings and knowing what's going on in the community, and then got involved with Public Works for three years, and been on the Budget Committee for three years, and have helped with the Jabberi and the luggage, many years helping with the luggage show, move stuff around and get organized. And I've lived in the city limits all of the time that I've resided here, so, and kind of watch what's going on around the community and kind of have an idea of when different things have happened and whatnot. And that's it for myself.
Okay. Based on your experiences or general awareness of the city, what do you consider to be the strengths and challenges for the city?
The challenges for the city would be getting some of our utilities up better specifications. We've got our lagoon can handle the volume of people, but we need to get the piping to the lagoon and the pump situation a little better to make that operate better. A little better communication out to the community. Not everybody has the internet. A lot of people don't like our paper, so the paper isn't all that good of an information for people. I'm not quite sure where our next, the next step for me to help get it out, but I guess at first it would have to happen to the community, try to get some ideas to come up with another way to get the community knowing what's going on and a little bit more involved. The other side of the question, we are improving things in the city to make it look better, and we're getting our parks up where they're doing good to help people come in and stay in our parks, play in our parks, and looking to get them managed better than we have. So, and trying to get some projects around town to make it safer and look better. That would be it for your questions for me.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Donnie, this is Councilor Allen. I'm going to ask you question number three. What would you consider the most important issue that poses a challenge to the city?
Well, me, and I know, and part of it's because of dealing with Public Works, a lot of our water drains, which will help our sewer issue, which is a big challenge, officials can't do, and we don't have a very good place to drain our runoff water or the ditches, so putting the ditches in and making a place for the water to go would be a pretty tough challenge.
Okay, thank you, Donnie.
You're welcome.
Hi, Donnie, it's Councilor Webb. So you've given us some of your background in your application and in this discussion. What do you feel are the strengths that you can bring to the council?
I would think the strengths to me would be some of the background knowledge of previous things that have happened, that people are wanting us to do something, but previous council and other people have put a bunch of time in and found that it wasn't feasible to do. That keeps coming back out, says, you know, well, we need to do this, we need to do that. And previous council has put lots of time into it. That might be that question.
Thanks, Donnie.
You're welcome.
I don't know if I quite followed you on that one, Donnie. Were you saying that...
Were you saying that your strength is that you know what the previous councils have put time into?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
By attending the council meetings, you know, there's been a lot of things that has come back to the new council people and they thought, well, this is a good idea. And then you say, well, wait a minute, two or three councils before you, but first of course into this and it didn't work out to spend a bunch more time on this, what they're wanting to do.
Well, just a follow-up to that though, wouldn't you think there'd be situations where a new council, a fresh perspective could figure out a solution maybe to a problem that's persisted? And one example I'll give you is downtown parking.
Yes, that has been a long-term problem. We need to get some siding for extra downtown parking. Where we've got the extra lot where people can park is going to be to help that situation. Because I personally see a lot of the bicycles coming to the post office or just off Main Street instead of parking down where the old West Oregon building was right from there.
Right, well, to be honest with you, Donnie, I was kind of referring to the parking fees that were talked about for 20 years or the requirement for businesses to park that we recently had solved. So that's why I was referring to, just because it's been talked to in the past, doesn't mean we don't tackle it sometime in the future. I don't know if you're aware, but there's no more parking requirement for businesses facing Bridge or Rose.
Okay, so you guys were working on that, but I must have missed the meeting that you've come up with the resolution on that.
Right, and that just referred back to your comment of maybe stuff that's been tossed around for years and years doesn't nest, to me, it doesn't necessarily mean we don't try to tackle it, to solve it at some point, even though other people have, other councils have attempted it. But I do see your point that past knowledge can be very helpful.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, moving right on, this is Mayor Hobart again. Don, number five, what do you see as the three most important issues facing the city of Veronia in the next two years?
Okay. The. Some of our growths we're going to have to watch to make sure we don't overload some more of our infrastructure. And try to get our streets back in better shape would be number two. Three, if we, in the future, could get some more water storage so we wouldn't have to be on containment soon would be good too. Those would be three of my answers.
Okay, thank you, Don.
You're welcome.
In the last few years, the city council has averaged over 60 meetings each year. There will also be additional meetings for boards and commissions you will be expected to attend. Are you willing to commit the time needed to attend these meetings?
Yes, I am willing to spend the time to attend the meetings.
Thank you.
JR, okay. Councilor Allen again here. Question number seven, Don. City councillors sometimes have to make unpopular decisions. How will you handle those who criticize you or a decision you have made?
You have to keep a calm collect and let them know with the information you had you made the best decision you could. Even though they disapprove of it, you did what you thought was best for the community.
Thank you.
All right, Donnie, it's Councilor Webb. What would you like to accomplish as a council member?
Oh, just keeping things moving forward with the city to make more good improvements and good decisions to keep a nice, good community like we've had. I guess the other real big one, and it's going to be a tough one to accomplish, is trying to get another good way of communication out there. Supposedly we've got two of the best you could have. They don't work for everybody. You know, the newspaper, the internet. So trying to get out of the community and try to figure out another way to communicate with them would be another big improvement. That's it.
Don, this is Grant. When you look at the city, do you think it's a lack of leadership or a lack of money that's holding up progress?
Lack of money is the biggest thing that holds us back on getting stuff done. Because usually we got to find grants or loans or something to get stuff done because we don't have a big enough income. That would be my answer.
Thank you.
What are we on, number eight? Number nine. This is almost a repetitive question, Don. This is Mayor Hobart again. Do you have the time to devote to this job?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask follow-up on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, so Don, Councilor Webb again.
Yes.
So, you know, knowing that you're a mechanic and you've got a, you've got work to do, how are you going to juggle, you know, if you've got a deadline on a piece of equipment, but you've got a council meeting, I mean, how are you going to prioritize around that?
Well, that's not going to be easy to do, but I'm going to have to put my city in front of my work to get it accomplished because I've devoted a good commitment to our city to help them move forward with making good decisions and being there for the city.
I have a follow-up if you're done, yeah. Don, this is Councilor Allen. A follow-up on that is, do you work for yourself or do you work for another company? And if you do work for a company, are they supportive of this endeavor if you were to be chosen?
No, I am self-employed, so my hours are flexible. You know, I don't have Monday through Friday. I can work here and there. I've got a lot of good customers that I can work with that usually work with me.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Don, this is Councilor Williams again. There was a question earlier about people criticizing you for your decisions. This, I guess this could kind of fall back to your business. Do you see this hurting your business if you have to tell a guy, "I'm sorry, but I can't have your loader ready till noon tomorrow instead of tonight at 9 o'clock"?
Well, I'm sure they're not going to be happy, but most of my customers are pretty understanding, but they'll have to wait because I'm making a big commitment to the city of Veronia and the people.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Final question, number 10. What do you think about expanding the urban growth boundary to add more acreage to the city?
We've got quite a bit of acreage to be developed. But if we added some more acreage and include more people, that's going to increase our revenue, which would be good for the community. I would be for making the urban growth boundary bigger.
I've got a follow-up.
Yeah.
Councilor Allen here, Don. Some people like growth for more revenue and they think more revenue is the answer for everything. Government's the, you know, the answer for all their problems. At what point would you see Veronia being big enough or too big? I know banks is having some growth issues. And kind of considering quality of life and why we really live here. Would you think the population doubling is the limit or tripling or is there no limit?
I would say doubling would be the maximum. With the resources we have at the moment, you know, we're going to stretch things pretty thin.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Don, this is Councilor Williams again. What kind of things can you envision coming into this community? Let's say it did double. What kind of amenities can you envision being built here that would make this a better community?
Well, if we got that, if we doubled in size, I would imagine we would get another grocery store, probably another gas station, and maybe another hotel or motel to accommodate people would be more inviting for other people to come and visit more often.
Thank you. JR's got a question.
Yeah, follow-up on that. You said inviting for people to visit. One of my things I have been pushing for is the beautification of downtown, which could include planting trees also. And as you're aware, we've got a grant, some things are happening, but that, to help invite tourism, you know, a lot of it's motorcycles, bicyclists, people just out for a drive. So how important is a beautification downtown to you?
That would be real good if we could get downtown looking better. I would think trees and planters would be better than putting them in the ground where we're going to have infrastructure problems. Get the, a way to keep our sidewalks clean and whatnot. Trying to get the businesses to help is a big challenge, but I think that right there would make a big improvement on the downtown, how it looks.
Okay, thank you, Donnie.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Well, Don, I'd like to thank you. This is Mayor Hobart again. I'd like to thank you for not only stepping up today to try to fill this vacancy and work for your community. I've, I've watched you over the last three years since I've been a part of this council. With your attendance to most of our meetings and your, your volunteer work on the Public Works Committee and the Budget Committee. And I've watched your, your sincere volunteerism, if you will, to help our community. And I thank you, not only thank you for being a part of this today, I thank you for what you've done in the past, in the past 10 years. Like you said, you've had quite an interest in our, in our community. And so that's very commendable. There seems to be, you know, when it comes to volunteering, there seems to be only a few that step up and, and do a lot of work. And you're, you, you're been a part of that and continue to be a part of that. And whether you're selected as to fill this vacancy or not, you're, you know, I know you're still love this community and so that's very commendable. Thank you, Don.
Well, thank you, Rick, for the compliment and everything. Yes, I like helping the community and liking it to grow and keep the community that we have had. And I wish you guys good luck on all of your decision-making that you got to do today. I know it's probably not going to be easy, so I know there's some other people that are applying. I'm not a very good one for this type of interviewing and stuff, but I know it's part of the task, so I figured I got to do it. I thank the city and you guys for allowing me to do it over the phone due to not knowing when we planned our trip that I would be applying for this position. So I know I won't be home Monday for your meeting. I imagine you guys will make your decision Monday, so I'll see if I can get on the phone and see how it goes. But I appreciate you guys taking your time. And I know you guys will pick out a good outcome and we'll move forward from there. Thank you.
Don, I have a personal question for you. Are you getting all that crab and lobster you were expecting?
No, we thought we weren't going to have time for that. And then later down the line, plans got changed and we couldn't.
Well, we're looking forward to you being home, buddy.
All right.
And we're getting pretty good at this technological computer Zoom phone meetings. So anyway, have a safe trip, you and Linda, back home and take care.
All right, thank you all.
Real quick, Donald, JR has something.
Did we offer him the closing statement?
No.
We didn't, but he kind of made one, but.
Did you have an additional closing statement, Don?
Well, I kind of said it there a little bit ago, so I don't have a closing one then.
Okay, just making sure.
Thank you.
Enjoy your visit.
Yes, thank you.
Bye to Linda for us.
Okay.
Bye.
Bye.
Okay.
I like your short, direct answers. Really do. Sometimes it's refreshing.
You know, it kind of reminds me of a dog trying to sit down and they just go in a circle.
Are we going to be honest and not discuss this any further so I can break for lunch? Or do you have some?
We'd like to recess at this time.
I think so, 10:28. We are going to lunch.
This conference will now be recorded.
All right.
We'll open up the interview session this afternoon at 12:00 PM. And our next candidate is Sharice Ash. Welcome.
Thank you.
Again, my name is Mayor Rickelbart, Howard Williams.
JR Allen, Counselor Whip.
What we're going to do, Sharice, is we have 10 questions to ask, and we're going to take turns asking them. And then after each question, if a council member wishes to ask a question or a comment, they can at that time. And then hopefully we'll finish within 45 minutes. And then after that period, you'll have an opportunity to make a closing statement. So again, thank you for putting your hat in the ring, so to speak, and stepping up. And thank you for being here today. So I'll go ahead and start with the first question. Tell us about yourself and some of your community services, activities.
Sure. My name is Sharice. I've lived in Veronia a little over two years, up on North Misch Drive. I live with my husband, a bunch of animals. I'm a photographer and graphic designer full time, but unemployed. A community service, I'm currently president of a 370-member nonprofit, it's a rock and gem and geology club. Was previously treasurer, secretary, vice president, all members at large. I'm also a serve on the board for the Portland Regional Gem and Mineral Association. So kind of convene with other clubs and boards in the area to promote education of geology that way. And looking, I really love the community since moving to Veronia, so just looking at how I can be involved on a more local level instead of regional. That's it.
Have you been down in the Halem River bed yet?
Oh, yeah.
Pretty interesting.
Go in every weekend almost, yeah. Looking for carnelian and fossils.
Yeah. Okay.
Where'd you move from, if you don't mind me?
I was in Portland for too long, and then originally I'm from South Florida, which is terrible.
Where?
I'm originally from South Florida.
South Florida.
I moved to Oregon in 2007, and we were long overdue to be out of the city, so.
Well, we don't blame you.
Yeah, don't blame me.
So was that your motivation for moving out to the country, just tired of the city?
Tired of the city. My husband grew up very rural. He had, he was on a 150-acre farm with his parents, yeah. And so he always knew, and then I said, well, I want to do that too. And he was like, are you sure? Because South Florida's, it's like suburban for 12 hours in every direction. It's terrible. So, yeah, I just knew.
Welcome to the country.
Yeah, thank you.
Question number two. Based on your experiences or general awareness of the city, what do you consider to be the strengths and the challenges for the city?
Yeah, I think it's kind of a dichotomy, two faces of the same issue, is that everyone is very close knit, and there's a really strong sense of community. Everyone really reaches out to help each other out and go out of their way to support each other. And I think there's so much division, and I don't think that, you know, having so much online communication during COVID has helped that issue. And so I just see people that are so nice to each other in person and then different on different mediums. And so how I think of the challenge or weakness is how we, as a community, can just support each other through anything. So, yeah, I'd say sense of community, but also division.
Like a media division, huh?
Yeah, I think so. You see people so nice to each other in person.
When they're brave online.
It's hard to be nice.
Punch them through the screen, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I just, I think, I think people here are so good, and so how do we channel, like, you know, not looking for the bad pieces in everybody and looking for the good of the community only.
Well, we were talking about that earlier. They'll put down their computer screens and come help you when the flood happens, so they'll be, they'll be nice.
No, I know.
Do you see any other challenges other than the communication issue?
Yeah, I think that floods and obviously fires, managing, working with timber companies to manage our forests in a way that protects our resources. I think fostering local business is a big challenge. I see a lot of people who are quick to leave town to save a couple of dollars, and that's not necessarily helping our local economy. So how do we support our local businesses and encourage community members to spend their money here? Yeah, those.
Thank you.
Of course.
We're done?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll ask question three. What would you consider the most important issue that poses a challenge to the city? I know a lot of these sound the same, but.
Yeah.
Be more like, what's a challenge for the city as a whole, like us?
Um, yeah, I would say probably managing growth, since that's pretty inevitable right now, while keeping small-town values and our local, like, mom-and-pop businesses surviving through that.
Right, and I follow up, same, I kind of, kind of same question I followed up with another interviewer was, we all want to see Veronia grow and continue to improve our tax base for other things, but at some point, what would you think would be the maximum? Would double, triple, quadruple for Veronia? I mean, what do you see in livability?
I think it is, obviously. I think some amount of change is, you know, always going to be inevitable. I think definitely keeping the urban growth boundary is pretty tight is important. There's a lot of homes and real estate that are in the existing growth boundary that could be improved. And then we could see new families moving into existing places or existing lots without having to build a bunch of new infrastructure. I guess size-wise, that's a really hard question. I like that the core and the city limits of Veronia are very small, even though we kind of have obviously a larger area, you know, up on Keesey up to Pittsburgh, a little bit south. So I would, I would love to see the core city limits not expand easily, not more than double.
So you basically like it the way it is?
I mean, I do, but that's right, that's not realistic, so you just kind of have to find that balance.
Okay, thank you. Okay, you've given us some of your background in your application and in this discussion, a little bit. What do you feel are the strengths that you can bring to this council?
Yeah, I have a lot of experience working as a contractor. I've worked with a ton of clients, a ton of different companies, everything from, you know, a three-person startup to large corporations. So just working with teams of all sizes, being a team player in that way and really collaborating. But also as a sole business owner, definitely knowing when, you know, a smaller team of individuals needs to step up and just lead. And then, yeah, my nonprofit organizations, we really have people from all different backgrounds and belief systems coming together. And so I think I've learned a lot over the years that way of how to, how to help groups meld together, work together for a common goal.
Okay. Question number five. What do you see as the three most important issues facing the city of Veronia in the next two years?
Yeah, I think a lot of what I said, I think, looking at how we manage growth, looking at how to support our local businesses and encourage people patronizing them. And definitely with some of the challenges with the droughts and the fires, looking at how we are working with other entities like timber companies, the fire districts, to keep the town safe if fires come too close.
When you said in your, in the fourth question, you work with large companies, in what form?
Yeah, as I do graphic design and photography and art direction, so I get hired on for like a marketing campaign.
Oh, marketing. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Grant?
Or is it reverse?
Oh.
Oh, are we reversing?
Well, we talked about.
Well, we haven't reversed yet, but I mean.
We haven't reversed yet.
But reverse you want to.
Close draw.
Okay, number six then. In the last few years, the city council has averaged over 60 meetings each year. There will also be additional meetings for boards and commissions you will be expected to attend. Are you willing to commit the time needed to attend these meetings?
Absolutely. I work a lot, but I run my own business, so my schedule is completely in my control. And, yeah, I'm willing to do whatever needs to be done and make the meetings.
Good. So you put out a pretty flexible schedule.
Yes.
Self-imposed, yeah.
The meetings can be any day of the week. They can be any, basically, almost any time of the day. So if you are in control of your own schedule, that's a plus.
Yeah, yeah, as long as there's some notice. We do try to get out in the summer on the weekends and hike, but it's always flexible, so.
We don't do a lot of weekend stuff, but.
Well, not a whole lot.
First one, and I don't know how long.
Yeah, you still have Saturday.
And that might include scheduling vacations between council.
Right.
Right? Willing to do that?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, it's okay to miss one once in a while, but.
Definitely.
I try to schedule my, between council meetings if I can at all costs, but.
Is your husband supportive, supportive of you doing this?
Yes, very. I think.
That's important.
I think he was a little surprised, but.
No, I'm not surprised, but I mean, you know, if.
No, I think he, I think he was a little surprised.
That you, her husband was.
A little, yeah. But in a good way.
Good.
Impressed, maybe.
He didn't say, what, are you nuts?
No. No, he's very supportive.
I've heard that a few times myself, yeah. Okay, I guess I'll, what did you just do, five?
You're seven.
I did six. Okay, I'll do seven. City councillors sometimes have to make unpopular decisions. How will you handle those who criticize you or a decision you have made? And you can get blasted on Facebook, believe me. Or they can come to your house, so anyway, that's kind of something where, question seven, how would you handle it?
I think most of the time when there is an immediate reaction of criticism, it's because someone is coming from their personal opinion of what they wanted for themselves. And a big part of that, of handling that, is educating and pointing out the reasons why this is better for the larger community. And so just kind of trying to shift the emotions of like, this may be a small inconvenience for you or not exactly the way you would have liked it, but here is why it actually serves our whole community, which lifts everyone up. And then I think, you know, always in any organization, you have to have a level of self-preservation where you can't take everything personally. Anytime you open yourself up to any public attention, you're kind of, you should be expecting that there's going to be some criticism somewhere. You're never going to please 100% of people, so, yeah, you have to be able to, at the end of the day, do the best you can to appease and explain the decision, but then also not. You can't, you don't ever sleep again because someone didn't agree with you.
Pretty good answer. I call it thick skin.
Yeah.
See, there are definitely people, the criticism rules off.
And you're also, you're also going to be in a position where you know why you made that vote, so you should be able to explain your position on it, you know?
Yeah, you shouldn't be making a vote for your own personal reason either. So if you arrived at it with the good of the majority, then that's an easy explanation to be able to give everyone.
That's something that will happen often, is it might not be your personal preference, but is it the best for the community? And that's a.
Well, a city council member, a city council member is not representing themselves, they're representing everyone else.
What if you passionately wanted to vote yes or no on something, and the rest of us voted the other way? How would you handle that?
Well, again, if I think that it was in the interest of the community, I'm not going to just give up what I'm believing in because majority of peer pressure, you know what I mean?
I see what you're saying, but you're going to have situations if you're on council where you're going to vote no. The rest of them are going to vote yes. Your name's going to be in the papers, the only no vote or the only yes vote.
Yeah. I mean, I think everything is a, is a case-by-case situation. It's hard to say what you would do for anything, but, um, yeah, I think part of it goes back to being thick-skinned. If, if there's a reason that I would believe in something strongly, then I should be able to, to handle any backlash, I guess, that comes from that decision and be able to defend it. But obviously, I think there's also, you know, if I have four people disagreeing with me, I'm obviously going to really think about why that is and what part am I missing that I can ask for explanation on to see, you know, where that, where you guys are coming from if I'm, if, you know, it's such a strong majority. Absolutely, it could happen, yeah.
It happens, and I think it's important, if you feel strongly about something, to vote the way you want to vote, not go with the crowd.
Definitely, it's a conviction.
If it starts with three of us vote yes, 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 it comes down to you saying no. You might change your mind if your peer pressure is just a yes, but it's already passed. I think it's important to say no.
Yeah.
Because that's really what you want to vote.
Yeah, I think trying to, trying to really see the other side and, you know, if four people feel strongly a different way, why is that? What, what information might there be that I haven't fully considered? But at the end of the day, if I have a strong conviction of something, I'm not just going to, going to give in to that. And you would see that if you, if you took a decision to the full community and, you know, did a poll or a vote, you wouldn't see everyone vote one way, so.
Right.
You don't need the council to be unanimous, because the community is not ever going to be unanimous.
Thank you. Who's next? Did I just go? I think I did. We're lost.
It must be my turn.
And number eight.
It's sleeping track.
Somebody's got to.
Ridge player. What would you like to accomplish as a council member?
Very redundant, you guys. I think just, just supporting the community and handling the issues that come to the council to be handled in a way that's just fair and, you know, considers preserving the values everyone here really loves, but also is open to how can we improve and make things even better. That's a vague answer. Yeah, just to handle any, any need in a fair and proactive way.
If you aren't sure of an issue or the background, are you willing to reach out and ask people like the city administrator, Stephanie, you know, what's this all about?
Yeah.
How long has this been a problem?
Definitely research.
Do you like to do that?
I love research, yes. So definitely, you know, learning who the people are to ask for different types of things in the city organization. And then, you know, there's a lot of community members who have been here a really long time that know a lot more than I would. That would be a really good resource for information and history and why things are happening the way they are.
Something that will come up, and we've all been, it's been stressed, do you, do you know what a serial meeting is?
I don't.
It's when you talk business outside of, when we're meeting together as a group, and you, you make decisions, and then you talk to somebody else about it, and it ends up influencing what the board would, the decisions that the board might make. You're good at keeping confidences and.
Absolutely. Yes. Yes.
Okay, good. I have a follow-up on this one. So we were on number eight accomplishments. When I go on and come on council, I didn't particularly have an agenda, I'd say, but I did really want to try to help downtown beautification and to promote tourism. but I did really want to try to help downtown beautification and to promote tourism. And it's taken three years almost, but we are gonna do some beautification through a grant. You're gonna see some flower baskets and some other improvements. I'm just wondering if you had anything that you see that you think could need improved that as a councillor, maybe you could help influence or, or have a goal toward, so. But you didn't really state anything in particular. Did you have anything at all that you see that could be improved around here?
Yeah, I think again, lessening the division between community members somehow and then definitely local economy, which tourism is of course a huge part of that. So, you know, getting locals to support our businesses, but also if we're not welcoming and inviting to, to tourists, then that's a huge hit there as well, so.
Sounds like you're almost on the same side of improving the looks of town to.
Oh, definitely. I mean, I think that's, I've never had anyone come out here to see us or to visit who hasn't, you know, commented after, because you have to drive through town to get to where I am. And so, so it's like, oh, that was so cute, you know, it's, there's a draw here that you don't have in the city. But, you know, to travel only an hour and be in a, in a community that feels and looks very different is really appealing to people, so yeah, that's a huge asset for us that we should be leveraging.
Thank you.
I get stuck with the redundant question. It's been asked similar before, but do you have the, the time to devote to this job?
I do.
Yeah.
Debated making that a yes or no question.
Yeah, yes.
I guess I'm next.
Well, are we gonna reverse again now?
Or are we gonna reverse again? Reverse.
Rock paper scissors.
Oh, fine.
Whatever, who's, who's this?
I'll ask it.
Okay, you do it.
Can you think about expanding the urban growth boundary to add more acreage to the city?
Yeah, I think there are definitely areas where that would have, would feel like less of an impact, but also give areas for growth. But like I said before, I also think there's a lot of areas and lots in town that could be looked at improving, or I don't know if there's, you know, a way to allocate some funds or some grants to improving existing areas where people could rebuild or improve the structures there so that you see a mix, you know, new places. Like there's, there's hardly any rentals in Vernonia, so how do you foster, you know, getting structures that aren't being taken care of or maintained to a better livable standard so they can be rented? So I think a mix of expanding growth boundaries where needed, balanced with how can we leverage the space we already have better so that we don't have to sprawl? I don't think that sprawling is in anyone's interest.
I think you live just a couple houses further out towards the bridge than I do. And a couple of years ago, it became necessary or the, the city decided to allow building, like there's a log truck outfit, horrible company and all of that. With this growth that we're considering, how, how would you feel about having another place right across the street from your place that's, obviously, here in your animals?
I don't think anyone would want that for themselves. And then that's, you know, where you have to look at zoning. So are you expanding for residential or are you expanding strictly for commercial? I think you're gonna get a lot more pushback in a residential area to zone commercial. So, I mean, that's where I think you have to, to really meet with all the surrounding property owners and hear their concerns before making a decision. At the end of the day, if we need to have more businesses or more residential areas to sustain the growth and economy here, then they have to go somewhere. So you just have to weigh where, where is the best place that's gonna impact people's lives the least? But I, I would like to not have another bus burn across from me.
You're tired of us driving, I know you do.
I mean, that's fine, keep to themselves. The logging place has like this color changing, like this is a tangent in their office that at night is a lot, but during the day they're fine.
So I have a follow up.
Yeah.
So, Sharice, one, at one point you talk about not wanting to expand the urban growth boundary and focus on more development inside, which is gonna make more density and more crowded and more people. Then on the other hand.
Right.
You move up here and people come up here for the charm and it's not crowded and crazy like Portland. So I'm kind of wondering, what's the balance there?
Yeah, I mean.
Some point, if we don't ever expand and force more density, which the state is trying to do with double houses on lots and shrinking lot sizes.
Yeah. Well, you don't want to see what you have in Portland, which is every lot being split into two, three, even four lots and they're building very tall, narrow housing with no yards or property. But I mean, I think you're hitting the nail on the head that it is a balance. It's not a black and white situation and everything's gonna be case by case and really weighing, you know, what has the least negative impact on the surrounding residents and businesses. But yeah, I think there are areas where we could expand the urban growth boundary a little and not see, you know, it wouldn't feel like town is suddenly twice the size, especially, you know, you have some kind of unique shapes where you could fill in some gaps that aren't currently city limits, but then, and obviously that depends on who owns that property, but. I think it's, it is a balance. You have to look at where you can grow without completely changing the, the values and the things that make Vernonia great, while still, you know, if, if you don't do that and like you said, just go denser and denser, then you're still impacting those things. So I think everything would be case by case on what makes the most sense for that specific part of town, that specific need, whether it's housing or a certain type of business.
Good, thank you. Another, yeah.
Hand it up first. Trying to phrase this. Is, is there something in your background that, that is spurring your interest to serve as a councillor? I mean, it, I guess I'm stereotyping here, but it's usually old guy, you know, or women. And, and it really intrigues me that.
Yeah.
You're stepping forward and, and you seem to be motivated to want this job and, and which.
I like to be involved. I think it's, I don't think it's fair to criticize or have opinions if you're not gonna put in some effort. And I've never been that kind of person that just sits by from the outside and complains, you know? And so in the past, it's always been my career or my hobbies where I jump in. I've been, I've been in a lot of organizations with old men. I have a problem with it and I'm not put off, you know? So I think that because I've never really loved where I've lived as much as I love living in Vernonia, so that's why I haven't necessarily gone to like local council or government in the past. But I think that motivation does come from that prevalence everywhere in my life of, I like to be involved. I think that I can be fair and proactive and listen to the needs of a group and not act only for myself, but kind of do things in a fair and a way to improve things without just being stuck that nothing can change. So I don't know, I don't really, yeah, I don't know what makes me wake up in the morning and want to be involved in things, but I just do.
Yeah.
Follow up on that. So Sharice, even if you're not selected, I, I really like the fact that you're here. And I like the fact that you're a younger lady and interested in government, which is boring to a lot of people, but it's really not.
Yeah.
I hope, I would hope that even if you're not selected, you would come down to some meetings or tune in from home and consider running in, in a year and a half or a year.
Sure.
You know, every two years or so, we have openings and council members leave or whatever. So anyway, I hope this doesn't scare you away, even if you're not selected.
Definitely not.
Because if you're interested, you know, you start coming to meetings or watching and, and it's a lot easier to integrate, you know, some of the stuff that's going on.
Absolutely.
Not absolutely necessary, but it does help, I think. And then you decide, boy, this, if this is something I really think I could really want to be a part of. But I, I do appreciate you coming and I hope we've helped you be calm and inviting here. I hope we have, it's, that was one of my goals to be honest with you. Make sure we're a council that's inviting for people to come down and feel comfortable to talk about complaints or, or good things, you know? Just that kind of situation, I remember coming down for my first time. It wasn't the easiest thing to do if you think someone's not listening to you, so. I try to be that way for everybody coming in to consider their problems and take them seriously, so. Keeps it to Facebook complaining down a little bit, I think.
Yeah.
But I want to ask one question.
Go ahead.
Yes. When we consider growth and expanding the city potentially, would you consider a hotel or a motel that would like have twenty-five rooms or fifty rooms or whatever, would you consider that an asset to our town? Or do you think that that would be a negative thing?
Well, we have a motel that has probably not quite twenty, but, you know, it's not so small. I wouldn't want to see like a Howard Johnson's, but I think, you know, one or two more like the cadence spread out of our town that retain that kind of charm, I guess.
Right.
Would be helpful because there aren't a lot of places for people to stay. And I see a lot of, of questions from the community of like, someone's coming to stay, how can we like rent a trailer, Anderson Park? And, you know, you don't, that's not necessarily the best way for someone coming on a flight that doesn't have their supplies and they're gonna stay only for a week or two. So having places for people to stay, because a lot of people locally have family or friends that come that they don't have room for at their house. I'd say more motels could be good, but I wouldn't expect a behemoth, hundred.
You'd want a pulver bill.
No, and I think, you know, you have something like what we have, but one or two more, you know, maybe there's more bed and breakfasts so we can get people to open with properties. So things like that, that kind of match the, the feel of Vernonia without saying no, we no more, no more space for people to stay.
Because there are times when we really do need more, more rooms.
Absolutely, yeah, but you don't, you know, you don't want to be, you don't want to be a help.
Salmon fest and jamboree and, and other things where we could actually bring in more people if they could stay here.
Right, and then.
Traveling back and forth, because there's nothing in banks that I don't know.
Right.
So that.
And then they're not coming for the day or even a single night. If they're encouraged to stay a few days, then they're shopping in town and they're eating in town. You know, that's, those are all things that help us.
Thank you.
Of course.
Sharice, I came out here to visit my uncle forty-eight years ago. He was the doctor here in Vernonia and he owned the Rock Creek Building. And I've been here ever since. At the time I got here, May nineteen seventy-three, there was about eighteen hundred people in Vernonia. Today we're around twenty-two hundred. It's grown, but it hasn't grown that much.
Right.
It's been, it's forty-eight years, the, the downtown area is pretty much the same, same old buildings. We're surrounded by warehouses, used to be Crown Cellar back and Stimson Lumber, private timber companies. We're kind of in the middle in this Nahian Valley. So, you know, geographically, we're, we're about ready. We are growing some, and we're doing some urban growth boundaries changes right now that this council has been working on for the last couple of years. But, you know, it, it's just kind of, when you moved out from Portland to here, you looked at a small little quaint town and it's probably gonna stay that way for, I don't look forward to double in population anytime soon. So that's really been a neat thing to maintain this small quaint town, small town. Yeah, when I, when I became mayor, well, it's my second term now, there, there was a lot I didn't know. And I've learned a lot, I'm still learning a lot every day about how we operate and, and how a, a big city operates and so. Just your willingness to, to learn as a millennial like you are, I think it's really, really kind of neat and refreshing. So.
I would like to say that I'm much older than I look. I'm on the high end.
On the high end, yeah.
Don't just, don't discount me, I'm not in my twenties, I mean. I have like ten right here. I would like more.
I'll admit I'm much older than I look also. I'll be definitely.
Well, I, I've been in town for about a month and I got carded in RNS. I looked at my attorney and he goes, oh geez, you're way older than I am. And I was like.
Thanks a lot, huh?
That's not the reaction. Everyone growing up was like, you're gonna love it when you're older. And I'm like, well, I'm still don't, we'll see.
I just love every.
I didn't mean any disrespect.
No, I know, I just, it kind of was a theme of like, it's great that you're, you're taking inches so young, so I just want to state that I'm young.
You're not right on it.
No, definitely not. Had a few regain.
You have been your captain, Rick. Oh, in government, yeah. Oh, yeah, government. I've got you all.
Excuse me. I would say that the, one of the most important things I've learned, and I'm still learning this, that this job right here is about building relationships. And, and there's so much that goes into that. And it, it's kind of, it's not easy at times because we have staggered elections where we elect two seats every four years, my seat every two years. And so when you get new people coming in every two years.
Right.
You have to be able to work together. There's so much to learn ethically, there's a lot of, and we're given a city charter and council rules and that's very important to, to read those and know those like the back of your hand. And, and so it takes time. And, and government work, it, it takes longer than just your regular photography committee, you know, and doing certain things. So it takes time and it's, it takes patience and it takes respect for each other and, and being civil and, you know, and like JR said, you're not gonna agree every time and, and it's learning how to disagree and still be civil and respectful. And so it takes time for us to all come together. And, you know, that's where it's about, that's what it's about for me anyway, building relationships, so. The color of the buildings and, and that stuff is kind of, that'll come if you, if you build your good relationship and are willing to do that, so. It, it's a big commitment, so.
One of the hardest things is just to sit and listen, because a lot of things will come before you, you've never heard of before. And you gotta come up to speed on, what are they talking about? When they talk about sidewalks up on Second, you know, I mean, probably never even been there. So it takes a lot of listening and patience, like Rick said.
JR, do you have something to add?
I'm just gonna tag on to what you said. You, you're here for a while and then you, you start to.
I'm just going to tag on to what you said. You're here for a while and then you, you start to. You can form relationships, you get to know the city staff and everything. And, and a lot of them are very nice people. And then sometimes as a counselor, you have to ask the uncomfortable questions. And like, sometimes they're politically uncomfortable, but you want to know the information. So it can be like, sometimes a cringe moment where you're going and says, no, I want to know this.
There's value in every question. There's value in every question.
Yeah, and you know, you can't be to where I don't want to ask, that's embarrassing for them. Sometimes you have to ask. You can't do it behind the door, so to speak, right? So there is a balance there, I think. You're not trying to look like the troublemaker, but you, sometimes you, you need that information. You gotta be able to say, no, backup. We had a counselor that's not here anymore. He was pretty good at that. So he kind of trained us up on that. But sometimes it's just not easy, but that's part of the job. The job isn't really to be staff or the boss of staff, so to speak, at times. So balancing act there, I'd say. And I'd also say, sorry, I'd also say, if you're really interested, which obviously you're sitting here, I would recommend looking at the budget. And you can get one from Stephanie. And look at last year's budget that we've already approved and start going through there. It takes a while to figure out kind of how they've laid it out and spend some time with that. And maybe even volunteer for the budget committee next year. If you're, if you're elected to council, you're automatically on it. But as a citizen, we have citizens on it too. So it's kind of important. A lot of stuff comes down to money. You can have all the dreams you want, but if you don't know what the budget is.
Right.
Anyway, understanding that budget, I think, is, is helpful.
Definitely.
And then also tuning in to meetings is helpful, just kind of get a feel of what's going on. So that's what, that's my recommendation.
Well, what I was going to say is when you come on, if you do, there's a lot of things that you've never heard of before. And it, it really takes a lot of humility and trust to lean on those who have been here for a while and know stuff that you are clueless about. You gotta listen really close because I mean, there's, there's things that everybody else knows that I don't have any idea. So you, you, you have to really be intuitive. And, you know, that, that's when you're questioning, no dumb question, you know, is that really right Dale? I mean, you gotta change the, the filters on the pump. You know, I mean, do we need that kind of manpower to do that? He would know you don't have a clue. So you would have to not, you have to be fearless in asking questions.
Definitely.
Because there's not a bad question.
Right. Well, and there's usually someone who is going to be more knowledgeable about any subject than you. And so looking for the person that makes sense to defer to them and, and hear everything they can tell you. And definitely not afraid to dig and research and ask questions. But at the end of the day, you also have to, you know, to make your own decision, you don't want to just, you don't want to take the decision from someone else. You want to take how they arrived at that decision and then come to your own decision with all of that.
For us to be successful, if we support each other, we can all rise. But if, you know, there's an undercurrent of trying to hold somebody else down because you don't agree with them, instead of rising together, we kind of.
Yeah.
Water in the boat and.
Yes. A lot of power and unity.
Would you like to have a closing statement?
Yeah, I would, I would just, I don't expect that I wouldn't be considered, but I would urge you to consider everything I've said. Consider that I'm definitely passionate about being involved and living here. So even though I don't have a lot of experience, I'm a very fast learner and absolutely will not hesitate to put in time to meet, to ask for help, to ask questions, to research, to arrive at decisions that I think benefit everyone.
I like that. Thank you.
Thank you. I had no experience when I sat down at this table.
Excellent.
I mean, not really.
I appreciate that.
As a counselor, none of us did, right? I mean, some of us had more experience in the city doing other things. But as counselors, none of us have had experience until we got elected or appointed. So don't feel out of place.
Yeah.
Yeah, life and experience is very important. It might not be government experience, but just contact experience with people, knowing how to relate to people is very beneficial.
If you came in here and said, I've worked for the government my whole life, I'd go, brother. To be honest with you, I'm not a big government.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Welcome to the community. What's your husband's name?
Joshua.
Joshua, okay. Hope to meet him.
Does he commute to town?
Um, so he's a building contractor, so he could work anywhere. Honestly, we lived in far east Portland and he worked a lot in Forest Grove. All the job leads in his company, he's the most senior, but the rest of them all live in East Portland still. So he has top pick of any.
It sounds like me.
Job on the west side.
Also in construction and I work at PDX every day.
Oh, wow.
Or four days a week.
Yeah, he doesn't usually have to go out that far anymore. The farthest he tends to go, they do a lot of work down in Charbonneau, Wilsonville. So that's a little check, but a lot of times he gets lucky with jobs in like Hillsborough, North Plains, Forest Grove, so.
Do you have children?
No.
I'm just asking.
I was thinking about that, but I, I thought that's probably a taboo question.
Not going to have children. I have a lot of animals.
No, I, I was asking because I was wondering about meetings, if it would. No, I'm not.
No, I am.
Kids with you, I don't.
Absolutely not.
We've had that before.
I have children.
I see children as a plus.
See, my mom had children. So I'm not against children. No, I just think it's a great place to raise a family.
Oh, definitely.
No, I, I chose to, I could have lived in town and been a lot closer, but I chose to stay here to get my children through. Even though I don't think Vernonia is the best school in the world, but I think the area is the best area in Oregon, one of the best. So they didn't have to grow up with gangs and the other problems. So I did a lot of driving.
My brother and sister-in-law are pregnant and we're, we've been trying very hard to get them to move out here. You should. This is the best place.
Well, it's not easy, you know, people drive four or five years, they get tired of it and then they'll move to the valley. So there is that rotation of people.
They don't, they live in a city. They've never lived in a city.
Committed.
You know, the funny thing is people grow up here and they go, I don't want to live in a small town anymore. And they're gone for a couple of years and they go, I can't wait to get back to Vernonia.
That's everywhere.
Yeah.
I mean, I saw that, you know, growing up in South Florida, I said that and I left and I'll never go back. But almost everyone else that said that went back. I think, I think anywhere, right? If it's the only place you've known and, you know, you were brought there by your parents, it wasn't your decision. There's always going to be a tendency to like, I need to know what I want for myself. We take for granted what we have until we leave it, so. And yeah, I think that's true. Small towns, medium, big, everywhere. You, you want to leave where you think you were forced.
Right where you were forced.
Well, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Nice meeting you.
You too.
So they have deliberations, they're going to have this evening or afternoon. Let you know.
Okay, and I'm going to the library, is that correct?
Yes, so the library.
Right, over there.
Right out the back.
Lock, just knock and they'll open.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Charlie.
Yeah, what am I doing?
Good to see you.
It's another deal.
Oh, good.
Oh, that's right. Let's do a voice. I'm like, I told you that. There's a citizen panel of three people. They'll ask you different questions. Then they're going to make recommendations to council. Council deliberate this afternoon and they'll come to a decision.
Okay.
Or the easy group.
We got you warmed up for it.
Have a good afternoon.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Well, German's done 12:45.
Okay, I was waiting for the recording.
It's good.
Well, Charlie Kippen, I would like to welcome you to this interview process for the vacant position on city council. Thank you for coming forward and applying for this vacancy. And today, Charlie, as well, you probably are aware that we're going to ask you some questions and 10 of them would be exact. And I'll begin with the questions and we're looking at about a 45 minute process here. And if you'd like to offer a closing statement when we're done, that'd be acceptable too. So I will begin the questions and then we'll go around to each council. They'll ask the question of you. So number one, tell us about yourself and some of your community activities.
Okay, well, a little bit about myself. I have been an on and off resident for about the last 20 years. My family's been here, but I've been in the army doing army stuff. So I spent 32 years in the army. I retired as a full Colonel in 2013. And then at that point, what I did was I decided to go and punish myself a little bit more. So I went to work for Benjamin Moore Paint in Vancouver, Washington, and spent about five years with them as their distribution manager for the West Coast. Okay, then I got tired of driving back and forth to Vancouver every day. And I said, I am going to retire. And I did it and had an opportunity to find a small business downtown, which I really like, which is Martin Arms. And I run a small business downtown now. And then it seemed like I had a little more free time. So I got involved with the senior center. I am the president of the senior center. And I am also the first vice commander of the American Legion in town. And I do those things because I care about seniors. I care about seniors because I'm getting to kind of feel like one these days as it goes, okay? But there's a lot of opportunities to help seniors. So that's something to be good involved with. And I really am kind of passionate about veterans things. And understandably, after 30 some years of dealing with those great Americans, those heroes, I tried to do things to also help them. And that's about how I stretched my time out with doing everything and still enjoying retirement a little bit. And then for education purposes, I have spent a few years doing education stuff. I had three master's degrees. And I have a, first of all, I have a BA in history. And then I have three master's degrees. They're all focused on strategic planning and operations. And I have a PhD in leadership and management from the University of Phoenix. So I have, and the reason one would ask, well, why do you go through all the pain of all that school? Well, the army paid for some. Okay, I'll just tell you, if you offer it, I'm going to take it. But I also have a passion for learning, love to learn new things. One of the reasons I'm sitting here, this is a new, a new thing, and would kind of like to learn it. You know, it's something that I'd like to learn at the same time, serve, but at the same time learn, okay? So it's, it's one of those things that if I can help, I would be more than happy to try to do so. What little my focus can be, you know, my little brain, but I will do always the best that I can for anybody. I love this town. I think it's a great place to live. So here I am.
Very good. Grant?
Based on your experiences or general awareness of the city, what do you consider to be the strengths and the challenges for the city?
Okay, based on what I know or what I have seen, okay? I think probably one of the biggest challenges we have are finding enough volunteers to do things. Okay, there is, there's, there's a lot of great people that are out here. But volunteerism is one of the things that I think is kind of hard to get after. And in order to make and keep your city great or anything great, you need people like the council right here. Because you know, this is, you're volunteering to do these things. So we need to have volunteers. I think one of the biggest challenges that the city has right now is it's a microcosm of America. And I think that poverty is a huge challenge across the board. And opportunities, so it's just opportunities for individuals to make a good life for themselves. And I think that as the city, anything that we can do to help people, right? With opportunities is a fair thing to do and a good thing. So I mean, those are the things I see is, is the challenges and, but you know, every challenge is an opportunity. It really is. It's all the way you think about it, you know?
I have a question. I can't help but agree with you 100%. What could you see yourself doing as a council person to help people who are poor by choice?
That is a... People that are poor by choice need to be encouraged, okay? Encouraged to do things to improve their situation. It's the old adage of a handout versus a hand up. What can, what can we do? What can anybody do to provide somebody a hand up? Because if you give a man a fish, he'll lead for a day. If you teach a man to fish, he'll lead for the rest of his life. So I think it's just those things that you could just, you must try to encourage people to do things like that. There are going to be folks that just don't want to get out of that rut, it seems. But at the same time, I would think, why would anybody not want to get out of that rut? Can I answer the question right?
It's a, it's a big question and it really, it's a moral, it's a spiritual, it's economic.
It is.
Huge question.
It is, it involves, it's like I say, but Vernonia is no, no different than any other city. That's just a microcosm of America. I mean, what we see here, I'm sure everyone else is seeing every place else.
To one degree better or worse, but yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
JR?
JR?
Yeah, welcome. All right, number three, right?
You three. What would you consider the most important issue that poses a challenge to the city? And I know some of these sound a lot alike, but this is a challenge to the city. So what are, do you see anything that's a challenge to the city?
Actually, you know, to be quite honest, we don't know that enough about.
That's fair.
I just don't, you know, I'm going to be the first one that always looks you in the eye and says, hey, I'm the dummy here. Someone help me understand exactly what's going on with that. JR, I don't know enough to tell you the answer.
That's a fair question. You haven't been down here dealing with it, so if you don't know, you don't know.
I might back up to the question Grant asked, and he asked about what are some of the strengths? You kind of answered two of the challenges and maybe this will maybe help in this third question as to what you see is facing Vernonia today. What, let me ask this, what are some of the strengths you see that Vernonia has?
That's easy. The strength of the people that live in this town, okay? Because I will tell you right now, there are people in this town giving you the shirt off of their back to help you if you need to be helped. If you're willing to be helped, they'll help.
That's the key, or you will.
Okay, the strength is the people. The strength is the community. And the, because I'll tell you, just know what a place like it is just very positive. People are helping each other and it's just a great place to live. And so I mean, tell you, that's the strength is the people. To me at least.
Thank you. Now to hitchhike on that, you mentioned you see the need for more volunteers.
I do.
We have strong people. How are you going to connect those dots? How do you envision connecting the dots of having all these wonderful people, a lot of them who aren't involved yet?
I think it's kind of if you think about some of the things that I do with the Legion, for example. There's some programs going on right now where we're reaching out to folks. You've got to reach out and you've got to talk to folks. You've got to say, hey, these opportunities could exist if we work together, okay? So within whatever realm of the possible, it's just making sure that you have good open communications. You're talking to people and you're giving them some type of idea of what could be if we work together closely. Because I know there are people that are willing to work out there and do things. If, you know, if you're just have some contact with them and you're talking to them. I mean, I talk to a lot of people every day that come into my shop, you know? And I listen to the things that they say. And a lot of it's just communication. How well are we communicating? How well are we talking? Because that's what starts the process of working together.
One of the things that I see, I face in my personal line of work and everything is 80% of the people are present part of the time and 20% do all the work. The people who are the strong volunteers, they're like on a dozen committees and boards and here and there and everywhere. It would be wonderful if we could implement what you're talking about, getting people who have the interest and the ability to lighten the load for everybody that's already carrying 10 buckets. So I mean, that, I see that as a very good thing, if that's something that could be accomplished through you and this board and the city.
Well, it needs to start somewhere, right?
It has to start somewhere. You're right.
Anything is better than what you already have, right? Anything addition.
The thing that is always a potential problem is you burn people out. If you, if you got X amount of people doing all this work that, you know, their family suffers, the more people we can get involved, better.
I agree. I would, I would not disagree with it.
Okay, Dale?
All right.
Four?
Four.
Dale? You get lucky, number four, lying all over. Let's do it.
You've given us some of your background in your application and in this discussion. What do you feel are the strengths that you can bring to this council?
I like to pride myself on doing critical thinking, okay? I have the ability to look at an issue from both sides, okay? I do have opinions about things, just like everybody else has opinions about things. But I am more than willing to look at something from both sides of the story, okay? So it's kind of Dale, I guess it's like giving everybody an equal shot either side because everybody has really strong opinions about some one way or another. Also, my communication skills aren't too bad. My written stuff is pretty good. I actually made it through a dissertation, so I must be able to write something, okay? And, you know, and I have worked in large organizations before with whole lots of folks working with me and working for me. So, you know, I know how to wrangle the cat, as you would say, all right, a little bit. So those are kind of some of the skills. And I'll tell you, one of, if you're going to ask weaknesses next, I'll tell you what a weakness is, okay? Sometimes I have a tendency to do more listening than hearing, okay? So I can listen to a lot of things, but you've got to really stop and for a moment, you've got to hear what people are saying. So I try to really watch that, you know, and make sure that I'm not cutting somebody off because I'm getting bored or something like that with something. So I'm working that kind of hard. That's just one of those things I try to work at too, because nobody's perfect, you know? And everybody wants to do the right thing, but we're all human beings.
Walk us through the process of the board has an idea that you think is not the best. Give us your explanation of how you would come to terms with what we're thinking versus what you think. And you're the only one that's on the other side. How are you, how are you going to process that?
Well, how I usually process those things or how I used to process some things is I would say, hey, it's a great idea. But did you think about this? Or did you think about that? Or do you think this might be something we could consider to make it better? Okay, now the whole idea is, is there's no such thing as a bad idea. All right, really not, there isn't. It's just the way you eat it, okay? So if you have an idea that you brought up, I think that you need to say what's on your mind. But at the same time, if it gets to the end state where that's what we're going to do, then that's what we're going to do and I'm on board. Okay, because it is decided by the folks. I'm not going to put personal aspiration in there. I'm going to support it, okay? Because that's for the greater good of the community, right? The greater good of everybody. And I'll tell you what, what, five heads, a whole lot better than one, true? So y'all know a whole lot more about what's going on here than I know what's going on here. So maybe I'm missing something, okay? So you just kind of really think through things and take your time when you make decisions like that. Because these decisions mean something, all right? It's not one of those things you wake up and we're deciding to go to the mini market today to get whatever they had down there, all right? I mean, it means something. So you gotta, gotta think, you're not the only guy who knows everything, because you're not.
So it sounds like you're a person who is willing to compromise with input and come to a better solution than what the other people are thinking now, but thinking ahead to what could be better.
I think you're always going to be better off with compromise.
Some people don't like to.
Because if you don't have compromise, you're not going to get buy-in.
You'll grow. If you don't compromise, you don't grow.
You don't grow and you don't have buy-in. And if you don't have buy-in, people don't want to support it.
Thank you.
JR, you want to take question number five, please?
Yeah, just a quick follow-up with this one. Charlie, there's going to be situations, if you're on council, where you're going to be the only no vote or the only yes vote. And compromising your own integrity is not something that I would hope you would do. If it's a no vote from you, I would hope it's a no vote. But sometimes you're going to be the only no vote or two no votes or two yes votes. And I just wondered how you'd handle that with, with the council. You just don't win them all. And you, you know, how would you handle that? Because you could be angry at the other council.
Well, first of all, no, not going to get angry at anybody, okay? Because this is business. Business is business, all right? When we get down here, we walk out in the street and we're the best friends, okay? This is just business. But I tell you what, I'm not going to compromise my integrity. If I think it's a no, after I hear all the facts and everything else and ask all my questions, I think it's a no, it's a no, okay? If I think it's a yes, it's a yes. I mean, I just will not compromise my integrity. I don't cheat. I don't steal. I don't lie. I don't do those things, okay? Because I find out that if you do these things, you always have to come back and tell another one, especially a lie, okay? Because it just will...
So why bother? Okay, why bother?
So JR, I'm telling you, if I think it's no, it's no. I think it's yes, it's yes. But at the same time, I won't make that decision until I, in my mind, have looked at all the facts that I need to look at and ask all the questions that I think I need to. Because like I said, I'm a latecomer. Y'all have been here doing this, you know? I kind of listen to what you guys, because you guys know the deal. You've set through all the trials and stuff.
But we still disagree at times.
It's okay to disagree, right?
I don't hold it personal. I can walk out and tomorrow's a new day.
New day, all right? That's...
I don't think we're talking about compromising your moral principles. What we're, what we're talking about is like, for instance, trees on the street.
Okay.
JR loves trees. Maybe, maybe they don't.
Right.
It's not a moral question, but what I was asking was if it gets to the point where, you know, are you going to fight putting trees if that's what people want? Are you going to say, you know what, the majority wants trees, we're going with trees?
Well, that's what it's about, right? We're representing the majority, right? So what's good for the majority is good for the majority. I mean, it is, that's what you do.
None of us...
Everybody in here's been elected but me, all right?
None of us, I don't think, would consciously violate our moral principles.
Like you know, there are people, Grant, that...
I know some people do.
Don't know, all right? Just don't know. But I would just wanted to confirm to you that integrity is huge to me.
Head rock.
It's huge.
Okay, we're ready to move on to the next question. Number five, okay. A lot of these seem a lot of the same, so it's okay to think about it for a minute. Just letting you know that. What do you see as the three most important issues facing the city of Vernonia in the next two years?
Three most important issues facing the next two years? I would say probably infrastructure, okay? And looking at the different, we've got some systems out there that are probably fairly aged, at least that's what my water bill and everything tell me. So, I think that we're going to have challenges with that as it goes on. I think we might have some more challenges with COVID, okay? I don't think that thing is over. I think that thing might come back a little bit, and I think, based on what we have learned so far, it will aid us in the future as we look out over that. And then I think, first two, let me see, another, did you say two or three, JR?
It says three.
Says three, in the next two years.
In the next two years.
You want to think of four? I don't care.
No, we'll just stick with three. I think, and I think that as time goes on, I really do think that the poverty concerns are going to grow over time, based on what, you know, is going on. We're going, Vernonia very well may be growing, okay, as people move out of the cities out this way. There'll be some things that we might need to consider there. You know, I think there's going to be, once again, JR, I think it's going to be challenges that other places face, that we're going to be kind of facing the same things that are coming up, small towns with poverty, with poverty and other things. I mean, crime comes with that, you know? It's another thing that jumps out there. That's not going away. And it's still out there. So, I think we're going to face a lot of different challenges that pop up.
Okay, you mentioned COVID, so I'm going to tag a question back to you. Do you think COVID has financially impacted the businesses of Vernonia? And also, do you think the city council should share some of the funds that are coming from the federal government to the businesses of Vernonia to help them recover?
The first part of the question is, is do I think it's financially impacted some of the businesses? Yes. Some of them in a good way, some of them in a bad way. For example, the hardware stores, they have made a killing, okay? The eat-in establishments, they have not done so well in a lot of cases. Now, I'm not saying they didn't real poorly, but they've done a little less than what they would do. Do I think we should share money with them? I'm not going to answer that question. I'm a small businessman, okay? That's one of those things, if we brought something like that up, and you were talking about giving money to small businessmen, I'm not going to get involved with that, okay? Because that's, to me, a vested interest, and I don't want to, I don't want to be thinking that I'm thinking about myself when that comes to that. Now, would I recommend that we look at that as a potential or a possibility, based on what you all think would be best? I'll provide input to you what I think, but I'm not sure that's one of those things I'd vote on, because that's too close to home for me, as a small business.
Well, I can appreciate your separating yourself from the conversation, because due to you're a business owner, but do you think those funds coming to the town are partially to help small businesses?
I do. I do think that they, that partially, JR, yes, they should be, there should be something that is in there. If it's for an economic type stimulus package, something like that, I think it should be considered, okay? I think it should. At least look at it and talk about it. If it's legal.
I have a question. Some communities have tried to deal with poverty and homelessness by building individual units that cost somewhere between two hundred and fifty and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars per unit. Would you be in favor of or against trying to help the homeless and the impoverished in our community by following down that trail?
You know, Grant, I'd like to say I'd do anything to try to help them, right? But at the same time, until I saw the details on the money and everything, you know, I wouldn't want to actually take a look and see if that's the most cost-effective way to go after that, or if there's other options or things out there. So, before I would make a decision like that, I kind of want to dig into it, do some homework.
I liked your statement about you can give a man a fish, or you can teach him how to fish. And with the poverty and the homelessness and those kinds of issues, can you see possibly the benefit of education to help those people as opposed to just providing them or giving them a place to live? Would you be in favor of the education?
Okay, well, I'll tell you a story, and it's an apt calling to me. But when I started my young life many, many years ago, I had two pennies strip up to get, okay? I am where I am right now because I've worked hard, and I made certain decisions that got me on the track where I am. Education was one of those things. I have never regretted a day doing education, because every time you're doing education, you're learning something. It's just like when you walk down the street, okay? When you're talking to people, you're learning something. If you're listening, you're paying attention, okay? So, I think good hard work is good for people, all right? I do. I think it brings a breath of fresh air when somebody does good hard work, because what does it do to them? It builds them up, okay? So, anything that we can do to promote good hard work or work is a good thing. And that's why I mentioned this thing with the fish, all right? Because I do believe in working, and I've worked all my life. I can't remember a time when sixteen and beyond, I haven't worked. Work has free will. It is if you apply properly, okay? But you've got to kind of make the right decisions. And I believe that there is nothing out there you can't do if you put enough effort into it. I'm just saying.
Okay, we're going to, thank you, Charlie. We're going to move on with question, we have five more questions.
Okay.
Councilman, number six.
In the last few years, the city council has averaged over sixty meetings each year. There will also be additional meetings for boards and commissions who will be expected to attend. Are you willing to commit the time needed to attend all of these meetings?
If I wasn't, I wouldn't be here, okay? Now, you know, I say that, but let me just say, in the past, I didn't have time, you know? And I thought about things like this when I was working out of town. But the number one question that always came back to me is, am I going to have enough time to do it right? Okay? So, I wouldn't be here if I didn't think I didn't have enough time to do it right now. Think that my life is in a situation right now where I'm busy in my business downtown during the day, all right? But not overly busy. It's a nice retirement job, okay? I like that job down there. And then the other projects that I have with the veterans, with the senior center, I mean, it kind of dovetails into what's going on with the community, so short answer is, yes, I have the time to do it right.
So, in that vein, would you have time? Part of the job is communication with staff. A lot of times, that includes coming up, meeting with the city administrator, just mulling things over, getting informed. So, will you have time, usually during the workday, to do something like that?
I would. Okay. Yeah, I would have time. That's simply just locking the door to the shop for a few minutes and walking down the street. So, yeah, it's not a problem doing that. And then there's a whole lot of cool things we got with this text in now and.
Oh, yeah.
And Zoom meetings and stuff like that, so, and I know how to do all those other things, so it wouldn't be an issue. I have time.
Okay. Number seven, city councilors sometimes have to make unpopular decisions. How would, how will you handle those who criticize you for a decision you have made?
Well, I had to make a lot of unpopular decisions in my life when I was in the military, okay? But in the way that I, it's pretty much, you made the best decision you could make under either the circumstances or the information that you had. And as long as I have done due diligence in making sure that I know all the facts and everything and make the decision, you put that weight on my back, okay? Because I've done what I need to, I feel like I have done what I have to do. And you know, it's okay, it's not a popularity contest, it's what's good for Vernonia, okay? And sometimes you're not going to make all popular decisions. I don't expect to be, you know, I expect people make it upset sometimes, I understand. But at the same time, what's good for the greater good, okay? It doesn't bother me, believe me. No, not at all.
Thick skin.
Thicker than you could think.
You're going to be in a situation, being right there in downtown, you're going to be more accessible than probably the rest of us to the public for just that kind of thing, walk in and go, what the hell are you guys doing down there?
Right, and it's okay.
Or not doing.
And it's okay, because all I'll do is tell them, here's what we're doing. Because you're not, everybody's going to like it. I know that.
Invite them down.
Yeah.
I remember last summer during all the wildfires and the emergency evacuations of equine horses. And I, I'm.
I heard about that, I heard about that.
And horses all my life, and I was a president of the Vernonia Ridge Riders in the eighties and quite active in that club. And I found myself down there at the entrance to Anderson Park, having to, to turn people away, horses away, just because we weren't set up to board horses. That was the biggest reason, along with our own police department, and, and we were turning them over to the Combe County Fairgrounds and Washington County Fairgrounds, and there was alternatives. And having to put myself in that position to make that decision, to stand my ground, to stand our ground, and support the city administrator's decision, it wasn't easy.
Nope.
And I caught a lot of flack on Facebook, and I was the worst mayor ever, can't be mayor, they recognized him because he, on and on. But it was.
There's one question to you, was it the right thing to do?
Yes.
There you go.
And so, you're going to, you know, as council members, we run across that quite a bit, and.
As long as I can, at the end of the day, say, was that the right thing to do? I'll take it.
When we close the lake officially for COVID.
Oh, my goodness. I can imagine, yeah.
That's another example, but those are the tough decisions.
But once again, you go back.
Have to do what's best for the community.
That question, is that the right thing to do? If that's the right thing to do, then everybody ought to just say, we did what we needed to do. And the same way, they'll walk in there, I'm sure, if I get picked to do this, they'll be in my shop saying, why'd you do that? And then I'll have to explain that that was the right thing to do based on this situation.
Or based on the time. We can go back in time, and there would be, if I could go back in time, might not make the same vote, but at the time.
At the time, yeah.
At least you made a decision.
Right. And you know, there's a lot to be said, what Rick just said. At least you made a decision. It's official cut bait, right? It hits that point.
Yeah.
You got to make a decision. And based on the facts that you have, you make the best decision you can with what you got, time, information. I mean, I made decisions that involve people's lives, based on the time that has happened, the information I currently had, and I had to make a decision. And that's a lot, when you're talking about somebody's life, there's, it's no.
That's a different level.
That is, that is, that is the level, okay?
Dale, do you want to take eight?
Okay. What would you like to accomplish as a council member?
Okay, the first thing I'd like to accomplish as a councilman was I'd like to learn, okay? I would like to learn about the city. I'd like to, and then at the same time, what I'd like to do is I'd like to help it get better in any way that I can, okay? So, what I'm not in for this is, I'm not in this looking on the long-term future in whatever we would consider politics or anything like that. I'm here because I think, or I was asked if this is, if I would help, if I would consider helping, okay? And if I can be of any assistance, then I will, but like I said, you know, I'm going to have to look and see what comes up, is, because I just don't know enough about it right now to say this is where all it will end up. I'm sure over time it will all, you know, but if there's anything I can do to help, that's all I'm here to do.
Did I hear you say you're not in for the long-term?
I don't know, okay?
You mean politics?
Politics. I'm not a politician.
Oh, okay, I got you, because I.
I'm not a politician.
Right, a lot of decisions we make are looking.
No, it's not that. It's about for my own personal benefit, like moving myself through a political, I'm not into politics. I did enough politics when I was in the military.
I imagine.
Okay? Yeah, I'm not into politics. I'm in here, I'm here to help. I mean, can't describe it any other way. No one's paying me to be here or anything like that.
Recession.
Just here to help.
Absolutely. Do you that? We're taking a quick recess, so.
That has to happen once in a while.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, you're going to give me another soda.
Yeah.
Would you like a drink?
Would not, I'm fine, thanks.
Okay. Anybody else?
We've got water also.
Yeah, we've got coffee, water, soda.
I'm happy to. Happy kids. I hope I'm making a lot of money, right? I got some guys down at the shop.
The head doctor's watching the store for you.
Yeah, I got a couple guys down there.
Got a guy in there that likes to give away stuff?
Tom, better not, no, he wouldn't be giving away anything, that's for sure.
That's the sound you don't normally hear in here.
What's that?
Popping a can.
We're not.
You can pop a can.
You drink anywhere?
We do. I just remember from the old days, you hear that sound, somebody opened a beer.
Yeah. Probably still hear that sound in certain places.
Yeah.
Have you been in here before?
You know what? I have not.
Wow, welcome to the chamber.
Have not been in this place, and I've not even been, I can't, I can't remember the last time I'm in a place called a courtroom.
This is.
That's right. This is it. I'm trying to remember the last time I had a traffic ticket. I think it was when I was sixteen years old or seventeen.
I waited a little longer myself, I was twenty-one.
I remember that judge, I remember sitting in front of him.
No kidding?
Yeah.
I do, too.
One time my dad and I got into a. One time my dad and I got into a fight and the police were involved and. What's his name?
Our guy's Rod.
Rod complained.
Rod.
He. He said he kind of caught us out on the sidewalk one day and settled it on the sidewalk instead. Guys need to straighten this out.
Right. Get that. Get over it.
Go home and do it.
Well, anyway, yeah. He, yeah.
I missed that. You know, I mean, the the police department in the past.
He knew the community.
They would. They would settle things on the street as best they could.
A lot easier to settle.
All the time settling a dispute.
It's a lot easier to settle things like that.
Well, excuse me. What'd you say?
I said a whole lot easier to settle.
Oh, yeah, much.
I thought, but that always stuck with me, the judge that come out on the sidewalk and like.
You look, you two, kind of like you want to make it knock your heads together.
Do we really need to have a court date on this or can we just settle this?
He performed my second marriage. Okay.
Good, Dale?
All right, we're back in session at 1:38. We're going to continue on with our interview process. And I think we'll move right on to.
Could I ask one more quick?
Yeah, go ahead.
If you were to become a council member. Looking back after your term, what would you like to see accomplished? I mean, I know that's the same question, but. What do you want to accomplish in the future? Looking back, what would you be able to say this is something I know would be a good thing that I would like to have done?
Well. You know, Grant, I I have to think about that. Because there's a lot of different things that I think we need to. Okay. Um, but you know, at the end of the day. If I could say. That I did anything to make this a better place to live. Then I have accomplished my goal. Okay.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say I I think we need to be careful not to start asking different questions.
Yeah.
Sorry. And rearranging the questions, a follow up on something they might say, I think is. Fine, but. If we start rearranging the questions, I don't know if that's like what we're supposed to do here today.
And I'd I'd like to really keep this process going. So we're going to move on with. Question number nine. Do you have the time to devote to this job?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We've done the call.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. I do. I do have the time.
Good.
And the willingness.
Who's up?
Webb. Dale, you want to last but finish? Yeah.
All right. What do you think about expanding nerve and growth down grief to add more rigage to the city?
I don't know. Because I haven't looked at it. And. I I wouldn't. I wouldn't be able to make a judgment on that until I looked at the what the story was. I it sounds good. I mean, it sounds good, but I don't know what's out there that potentially could be an issue that maybe be in the legal issue or any other thing that's out there right now. So I I couldn't say for sure unless I looked at it.
Are you going to hit him with your follow up question, JR?
Well, he didn't have an answer, so.
Yeah, but your follow. So if we expanded the boundary and Vernonia was allowed to grow. Now, I think I got somebody else this question. How big is big enough? Is it double the size of Vernonia, triple? And at what point does Vernonia lose its charm and livability in your opinion?
Okay, that's a fair question. In my opinion, I don't think we ought to grow too much more. Because I don't think we have the infrastructure and things to support that growth. Okay. And you're absolutely right, JR. I like the charm of this town. So to grow it to a point where it starts to look like a. A forest grove or something like that, that's not what I signed up for when I came. I came to Vernonia because it has that small town charm. Um, so in from a personal opinion, that's what I think. Okay. Now, once again, I don't know what everybody else thinks, right, in the town or things like that. But from talking to some folks, they kind of like the way Vernonia is. You know what I mean?
Thank you.
Any other questions before? Charlie has the opportunity for a closing statement.
I'd just like to thank you for coming. And I hope we've been. Easy to sit here with.
You're all right, JR. I don't care what they say about you.
Good thing I don't either. No, if you're not selected, I really hope that you. Consider running in a year and a half because there'll be probably a couple more positions come up, just like all normal. And. Even if you're not, I hope you start taking some interest, follow along the meetings, maybe volunteer for the budget, because I think that's important to understand. Um, you can actually get a budget from us and study it from last year and get a good feel for where the money is. And just keep showing the interest. I really like the interest from the public. And that's what it takes because we are a volunteer town. It's a volunteer job. But it is a job, so. Anyway. Good luck to you and we'll see what happens. But even if you're not selected, I hope you really consider sticking with it and think about running on the ballot. You know, if you keep trying, believe me, it's not that hard to get on here if you really want to.
Okay. Perfect.
Thank you, Charlie.
Well, is it closing statement time?
Yes.
Thanks for the opportunity. Okay. And the only reason I'm here is. That I would like to help you if I can help you. Okay. And I do understand that there's a better qualified person out there. Then so be it. That's who should be here. This all for about the greater good of of everybody. Okay. So whatever works, works. I'm happy with it.
Well, you're just as qualified as I was, probably more, to be honest with you. So. You know, it just comes down to the decision that we all vote on and then and moving forward with an appointment here. But as far as.
We understand.
You've lived here for a year, you're. Just as qualified to run for council as anybody else. It is a job that you learn, but you actually can learn fairly quick, especially if you start paying attention to the meetings and watching them online. You can go back on YouTube and watch them all.
Nice.
For the last year and a half. So. I would encourage you to do that. It kind of helps you kind of get with the rhythm of things. And it'll probably spark your interest even more if the more you know about it, so.
Good.
Thank you.
So they're gonna deliberate this afternoon and come to a decision and then I'll be in touch with everyone the next couple days.
Okay, sounds great.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you. Integral part of our community too.
Take your time.
Are you done or you have to go next door yet?
No, I'm done next door. I gotta go back to work.
Gotta go over to the shop and make sure they have birds laid down. So we're good?
Go back to work.
Thank you, Charlie.
You just do so.
We can go out. Did you hear? Thank you.
I did.
I had to go to like.
But I was trying to wait.
Okay, so let's have the speaker off next. We take a private.
Oh, suddenly.
All right, continue on.
Okay, I'd like to return to a deliberation session at 1:55 PM, July 17, 2021, to hear the other committee's deliberation on the four candidates for the vacancy of Burnonia City Council. And so at that time, this committee has the floor.
Thank you, appreciate it. I just wanted to take a minute and say, we believe that all four candidates have something to offer to the city. We really appreciate their willingness to step forward and serve. So even though there's one seat, we do think that it would be appropriate to invite any of the four candidates to apply for open seats in committees, including the planning commission, because we think that they have, you know, good experience, good knowledge, good, you know, dedication to serve. So any of that, we think would be appropriate to invite them to apply to any of those committees to actually get their foot in the door and start serving the community. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it seemed like they all had a desire to serve, and we should be taking advantage of that because we have empty seats. And, you know, the people, whoever we chose not to appoint to this or that you choose, really would like to see invited or encouraged to find a place to participate. So we just wanted to share that.
Yeah.
It's interesting because through our discussion with the candidates, we also talked about if they weren't appointed, that there's a big need for volunteerism in the committees. And that was discussed here with the candidate, candidates as well, so.
Good, that's great. So just a little bit about, about our process. We kind of had time in between each interview, and so we just briefly chatted about things that we noticed about each candidate as they went through, and then we scored them separately. So put them in the order that we would have chosen them, and we were all very close. We had one little slight discrepancy, but all three, the three of us all scored them very similarly as far as who would be our first choice, second choice, third choice, first choice. So, but we did, we all chose Susan Wagner as our first, first choice. We thought that she has experience and the technical knowledge to do the job. We thought that she showed some real optimism about the state of the community and where it's headed, and had some good vision for things that she thought we might do going forward. She had some creative ideas. We thought that her points that she made were very realistic and, you know, based in understanding on how the city operates and what is doable and what's not doable. She was very realistic. And as part of her technical knowledge, that she also had a good understanding of the budget. And that, that was, that played into the different things that, as far as her realism, her realistic view of the city. So those were kind of reasons why we, all three of us chose, picked Susan as the top candidate. After that, we were very close between Sharice and Donald. Sharice scored just a point ahead of Donald in our scoring system. We thought that Sharice offered, or I'm sorry, Brett, you were gonna take.
Yeah, sorry, I'm on a roll. So we've, we kind of, yeah, they were basically tied for second. So in case she decided not to do Susan, our second choices will be Sharice or Donald. Donald's strengths, to a reason to pick him would be that he does know how the city works. He's got some very good knowledge of that. But we, we felt that his, he was more on the tactical side rather than the strategic side. And our feeling was that city council needs to be more visionary, strategic. And in that case, if that's what you're looking for, for your replacement, Sharice would be very good from the strategic and vision side. And in addition, she would be more representative of a large portion of Burnonia that's not currently necessarily demographically represented on council right now. So she would help give a different perspective than you guys might have currently. So that's our, basically our.
That was it. And, yeah, and Charles came in, was scored fourth for us, so.
Can you elaborate a little bit on Charles coming in fourth? What kind of turned you on or off with his answers, maybe?
I would, I would say for me, he, he's got, he's got a lot of knowledge, but he doesn't necessarily know how the city council versus staff works as well as some of the other candidates. He doesn't know the ins and outs of really what the city does versus what the city doesn't do. Some of his answers were really good answers about what needs to be done in Burnonia, but they weren't necessarily things that the city really has purview over. And, but we felt that he would be an extremely good candidate for the planning commission. And he would also be a good candidate that after serving some time on the planning commission or some other city council, and kind of getting over that learning curve, would potentially make a good council, but felt kind of like he probably needed a first, a first step below the city council.
And Sharice with no experience and some of the answers she had for us.
Yeah.
I'm a little bit surprised she got number two, but is that mostly because she would represent a different segment?
That, that was, for me, that was a lot. I felt like she, she also, like Charlie, did not have a lot of the, the knowledge of the ins and outs of the city, but I felt sure hers was a little bit better than, than his. But yes, I, I felt that she was a strong candidate because she would, she does have some really good perspectives. She's got a different perspective. And I felt that she had her, when we talked about some of the visions and the forward-looking, I felt like she had really kind of thought about that more than Charlie had.
Thank you.
And a little bit more than Donald did.
Yeah.
We felt like Donald really, Donald had really good knowledge about what's going on in public works, and that's really valuable. We all rated that pretty highly. But, you know, I mean, a couple of the questions that we asked were, you know, what are some of the challenge, the issues that are challenging the city? And how would you address those challenges? And looking five years out, you know, what would, what do you think would be different about Burnonia? And, and Donald didn't really have a lot to, to offer in some of those things of kind of looking forward and what would be different. And I think that, as Brett said, if you're looking for somebody who has the tactical knowledge of what's going on in the city, then he's a good choice. And if you're looking for a little different perspective and some new ideas and a little bit of vision, then, then Sharice might be a little different choice. Like, we kind of rated them pretty much the same, but for really different reasons.
Do you, Scott, do you feel like maybe the phone not being in person was a little bit of a disadvantage for Donald?
I don't think so. I think, you know, we all know Donald, and he knows us. And I don't think that there was, I don't think there was really much of a block.
Yeah, and it was a really good connection. Sometimes phones can be a very, just, it was right on the phone. We could hear him fine. He could hear, there was no breaking up like you, you hear on a lot of these multiple conference calls.
We as well had a good connection. So I just wanted to make sure that you guys had a good.
Yeah, I don't feel like that was.
And I felt like we, we tried to prompt him a little bit too, of, you know, asking him to expand a little bit more. And he, and he didn't have a lot to expand.
He's not a man of many words.
He's not.
Which is okay.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
Can be.
You can say too many words sometimes.
Sometimes.
Right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I, I was the one that was kind of going back and forth between Donald and Sharice, because I think all three of us, I can say this, were really, I think it's important to have prior community involvement on like kind of city functioning ways. Like, it's nice to be involved in other community things, but, so I didn't, I really wanted to honor and pay attention to the fact that Donald is involved, and he has the technical knowledge and kind of like, yeah, the tactical stuff that, that you need. And, but yeah, the, the strategic thinking with, you know, the visions of how to move forward was not quite as elaborate as I would like to have heard from him with his experience. And then for me, you know, the struggle with Sharice is I think that, I think the lack of experience, right? And just, but having someone that is willing to learn, to, who is new to the community, who is a little bit in, you know, her age bracket, that does represent a larger proportion of the community that isn't currently represented and hasn't been represented for a long time. I think that that is a good thing as well, even though she's not like a lot, you know, she's not in her twenties, but. And she just did kind of get the connection a little bit more about how there, her and Charles will talk to a lot about community organization and how communities can be healthy and helped by different organizations, whether that be Chamber of Commerce or the Lions Club or the, you know, multiple different community organizations. But I think Sharice just had a little bit of understanding of how city isn't directly involved, but they can be supporter and a possible resource and collaborator rather than a directive of it. So I think that was kind of what tipped me for, between the difference of Charles' experience versus Sharice, because they both have no city experience, but she kind of had a little better, better understanding of how exactly the city functions and that, and some of those visions that they were talking about. So that was kind of where my thought process went.
Right. Well, you're not gonna know until you're here for a while.
Right.
I, I, I also encouraged her, if she doesn't get chosen, to stick with it, maybe join a committee, run for council in a year or two, whenever it comes up. And if she really wants to do this, you know, I think she would be an asset. Exactly what you guys were saying, for a segment that's not really representative, or younger folks or, and newer folks to the community.
The demographic here is really changing a lot, and there's a lot of new people coming in. And they live here, and they pay taxes, and they vote, and, and they should be represented in some way. That shouldn't supersede, you know, knowledge and experience and understanding of how things operate. But, but it does, it should be taken into account. This may not be the time where we fix that issue, but, but we all should be thinking about it. There's lots of people, and we need to be finding some new volunteers and some, some new people and bringing them in and get, finding ways to get them involved. Maybe a seat on the council isn't that, that way, but just something to consider.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't know if you guys got the feeling, but I didn't get the feeling that she had done any research into watching council meetings as far as her answers, is kind of knowing the flavor of what's been going on in the last year. Because you could watch all those meetings if you wanted to. But I didn't, we didn't, I didn't ask her that question directly.
Right. We didn't either, and, but I, and we sort of had the, I think, the same feeling with Charles either was, although we didn't, I don't, I don't know, we didn't talk a lot about specific current issues. Although we did have a question about what are some current issues that are, you know, of concern. They seem very similar, what they kind of picked out there, so.
Well, unless they're watching the videos on YouTube, none of them are tuning in except for Susan.
Right.
They'll see it all.
Yeah, right, we know who's attending. So that's kind of what we have for you guys. I don't know if anybody else had questioned anything.
How close are the, you said Sharice and Donald were pretty close together, but you did put Sharice slightly ahead. So how close do you think the number two candidates are to Susan?
So our scoring, and the way that we did it, was not, wasn't very complicated. We put them in order. So if it was our first choice, we gave you a one, her second choice was two, third choice was three.
Per question?
No, no, just an overall.
Oh.
Overall, yeah, just a final score. And, and so everybody ranked Susan first, so she's got a score of three. And then two of us had Sharice as the second choice, and one of them had it as the third. So she got a score of seven. Donald, opposite, two of us had him third, and one had him as second, so he had an eight. And then Charles had a 12th. It's not a really, it's gonna be, it's gonna be spread if it falls that way.
Just giving us a.
Third choice.
An idea of what the separation is.
Can we restate what Susan's was?
Susan had the score of three.
Thank you. Yeah, all of them talked about volunteerism, you know, being an issue of like the city involvement and stuff. And so we just, it was a little bit nice to hear that. And then I was making a joke that this is a way to get volunteers in these interview panels and assign them in different committees that we think are appropriate for. I mean, all of them, like we said, I mean, it, it wasn't, you know, sometimes when you get down to the score, it seems like it was easy, but it wasn't. We really considered each of them, their strengths and some weaknesses that we felt were there. And it was, it was a tough choice, but especially between, you know, Sharice and Donald. But that's why we're kind of leaving it to you. We know we're making the recommendation that Susan was for us the top choice. And then Donald and Sharice had very similar stuff. And we also appreciate Charles and think he has amazing qualities. But just, just thought he just had a little bit more connection with city operations to go. It might be an easier fit for him to be on the planning commission or in the committee first, so.
I like that he was a veteran.
Oh, yeah, awesome.
And it seems like he's well-educated in different aspects. Not knowing exactly how it would correlate to council, but seems like a guy willing to take training and do things. So in one way, in a lot of ways, I was impressed by him. In some ways, obviously, there's, there's lack of, of immediate city knowledge, obviously, which most of us, when we sat down at that seat up there, had quite a bit of that. Very few of us were like, well, ready to sit down and take over.
Yeah, that's true, that's true. And like I said, we were impressed by all of them for different reasons.
I mean, if we were forced and we only had one candidate, and it was either any one of those walked in, they could do the job.
Yes.
I wouldn't be like, oh my God, look who's here. It would be like, okay, we're gonna have to teach him on some things, but.
We actually talked about that, that there wasn't any immediate, like, disqualifiers. There was nothing immediate that stood out and went, oh, probably not gonna be.
I think I encourage each one of them, if they weren't chosen tonight, just to, if they really want to do it, to continue with budget or get the old budget and, and read it and spend some time with it and, and apply, you know, put in for election time and run if they want. Because, you know, eventually they're gonna, people get tired of us up here over and over and over.
I will just go back and say that I do think Susan was the clear best candidate for us. Like, she had answers that were in-depth, she had a good understanding of what's currently going on in the city, what the current, you know, issues are, and had some decent ideas about things to do about them. And I mean, it was, I think for each of us, it was pretty clear that she was the, the best candidate. That's what we have for you.
All right. Thank you. Well, thank you, thank you very much. And we thank you for taking the time to actually do this. Not very many people stepped up, so.
Yeah.
You're the volunteer leaders of the community, obviously.
I kind of came to the enlightenment during the process that this was actually, you know, it was, and then I told the council this, and even one of the candidates, it's unfortunate that we had to fill a vacancy. But actually, it's, I'm looking at the positive end of it. This was kind of refreshing to me to see four candidates come forward. And actually, I thought the interview process went really well. And it even gave me a little bit of a boost and reminder of how I should do my job. And, and so it's encouraging to me and kind of a reminder. It made me think about, well, am I doing that job that way? And so it was a healthy process, I think, for our, for our city. And so thank you again for being a part of it. And we'll talk about your recommendation and the four candidates. So Dale?
I got one question for the citizens panel. Prior discussions, it was brought up, the last election was somewhat viewed as an election for change. Two incumbents were voted out. I think that's a valid point. I just kind of wonder what you guys' perspective, do you really, do you think that's what the citizens were kind of looking to do?
We, we had this discussion as well prior to starting. We talked about that a little bit. I think, I mean, what we kind of came to the conclusion was, is this is a, this was a fresh start today. Right? We had four candidates in front of us that we're getting a chance to evaluate, getting a chance to ask them questions, getting a chance to really listen to their responses. And if we were casting a vote, which we were in some regards, we're, we're the voting public today, you know, that, that we were just gonna look at them kind of all fresh and see who we thought would be the best person to sit up there and represent the community and make good decisions on our behalf, representing the voters. So I, I, that came up in a council meeting, JR said it, I think, and I took that very much to heart. I really thought about that, that, that is what that vote said. But now we're sitting here with four different candidates. And, yeah, I don't know if that was a vote against Susan as a city councilor, if it was a vote for the two people that were running, vote against Susan and vote against Bruce, or whether that was a vote for the two people that were running. I do think it's something to consider, and we talked about it. I do think it's something to consider and we talked about it.
Yeah, and I think, I agree with Scott, and I also think that, you know, with elections, I mean, anyone is eligible to put their name in the hat and, and run, and even if you lose an election, you can come back and run again and win. So each election is different. There's different reasons. We can't know what was exactly in the minds of voters. I mean, some people, you know, if you go ask them, they might not even have a good reason why they think somebody. And some might have an elaborate reason on why they pick someone. So to try and assume what a voter was thinking when they cast their vote is something I don't want to do. And I just want to look at it as a fresh start and new candidate. And if, if, if Susan were to, or any of these people were to decide to run in two years and, and they could be voted in, so it's, it's new.
I just wonder what the school board will do. I believe Kyle Buck had the next highest vote, if they'll automatically appoint him.
They have it open for applications?
They're, they're taking open applications. He ran against for a different seat.
Right, they have per seat.
They have, they have specific seats.
And he might not even want to do it, I don't know. Yeah, there's certain people that I think that just like to change government, you know, they don't trust government probably. And there's certain people that probably liked the candidates they voted for, you know. So you could have the same election probably two years apart with the same people and you might get two different results. You never know. There's can be political climates that, that happen on the national level that can affect the local level. And I think you're right, just because you lose once, there's many times in Vrnonia, you're the only candidate on the ballot and you're sitting up there and, you know, you don't necessarily need to feel special because you're elected to something that you're only one on the ballot, right? So.
And, you know, example might be, you know, the, the school bond. I mean, it, it fell in November and then six months later it passed with a, a large margin of victory. And so, yeah, so even, so even six months later, the, the whole perspective has changed, which I think goes to why we talked about it being a fresher election and what happened in the last election is actually at this point kind of irrelevant, in my opinion.
I think all of us is, you know, either former elected officials or somebody who tries to put the word out about elections, we'd like to think that our voting constituency is well informed, but that's a lofty ideal. And I think, you know, name recognition is often a big thing, especially in a small town. You know, there's just a lot of reasons why people vote for who they vote for. It may not be because they have the proper knowledge. And that's what I think this is a pretty good process, you know, because we do have people who are engaged in the community and know things about how things operate and have sat up in that seat or watched it from here. And I think, and of course, you guys know what it's like to be up there. So I think hopefully we can get a good choice out of this, but.
I think we're in almost the same position that you guys are, except for we have to work with them, but.
Yeah.
You can take someone that's technically the most qualified, or you could say maybe a fresh perspective would be good, or maybe a female or a young person, you know, you know what I mean? A little diversity in age or even background can be healthy, right? So I think Charisse is definitely sharp enough. I, I think I agree probably that she, she got a little bit more involved, she'd have an easier time, not that she couldn't catch on, but I was actually pretty impressed with her, so.
Again, again, I think any one of them would be fine up there. If we're looking to, yes, it's her recommendation, so we're giving you a recommendation and you guys have to pick who you think is going to be the best choice. Any one of them will succeed, I'm sure, so.
And I agree.
The main part, I think, is you, you want to be here for the right reason, you want to, you like Vrnonia and you want to help them out, right?
Yep.
So the rest of it can be learned.
That, that was why I wanted to be on the committee. I wanted to make sure that, that, that somebody didn't come in thinking that they could have their one agenda thing and have this power and, and coming in for the wrong reason. And it was, it was pretty clear that none of, nobody was coming in for the wrong reason.
I couldn't get it out of them either, if they did have a singular, really, some of them were pretty vague on the, I don't know if they even really had any ideas of something they wanted to accomplish, but.
I never once felt that, yeah.
Right, yeah, me either.
Yeah.
I never sensed there was a grind, an axe to grind or anything like that, so.
I'm, I'm a little concerned. I mean, is, I mean, we're talking about this as being a fresh slate, but yet you have an incumbent that has years of experience. And so it is, the playing field isn't totally equal, you know? Some people can be very well versed at answering questions. And we're looking really, and it was mentioned, who we can work with and, and making that decision-making process. And I think, you know, they all score, they're all good candidates. We, we can pick any one of them, I think they will function up here, so. I do like the, I mean, not to be sexist, but there's four guys up here.
It'd be nice to have a little different perspective.
Yes, and, and even though Charisse isn't quite as young as she looks, which can't hold that against her, you know, that is something of value, I think, for this council. That representation of that age group and I was just impressed with her, her understanding kind of the, of the job. I mean, and, you know, for her age, her, I don't, it's just, it's just me, it's just a stigma, a stereotype of, you just don't envision younger people. I mean, you see them being in government, but to be as the decision-making body, you think usually warriors of experience or being on a board or something. But she was very, very engaged and articulate around that. And it was just like, man, it's almost like you've been in government or something before. To me, I got that feel, that vibe.
Yeah, she's part of a, you know, a geology rock club.
Yeah, but still.
Of like hundreds of people. She's the president.
Yeah.
So she's, she's had to probably run a meeting, you know, maybe not an official government meeting, but still sit and run a meeting and, you know, she, she showed something to enough people that they made her the president.
Yeah.
That doesn't always mean anything in those kind of groups, but it means something.
In that size, it probably does.
Yeah, it means something. You know, somebody, somebody thought that she had some skills and some ability to be a leader. It's different than sitting up here and making policy decisions, but it is some experience that.
And, and she seemed very at ease.
She did.
That was the thing that little soft spoken. Yeah, I mean, she's a little hard, I'll have to put my hair in aids in, but, but he wasn't intimidated at all in this process. I was, you know, it concerns me if any candidate, you know, that they'd be nervous or whatever and they try to make them at ease, but I was like, no, she seems competent.
And she says she moved here in 2000.
She's been here two and a half years.
Two and a half years.
Yeah.
And I liked her comment that she'd moved out of Portland on purpose.
No.
Yeah.
I'm not a big Portland fan, so.
I think all the candidates talked about how we growth, but while retaining the charms, they, they all had very similar answers in those regards.
I kind of asked.
I don't, you don't have anybody coming in trying to make it Portland.
I was like, well, how big is big enough? Is it double, triple? Nobody really said over double.
Yeah.
Like ever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like Rick was said, said, it's 1840 years ago or more and now it's 2300 or something?
Yep.
Twenty-two.
It's kind of goes up and down.
Forty years ago.
It's hovered around 2100.
Eighteen hundred people.
I think it was 2150 or something.
Yeah, we haven't grown from 79.
What was that?
We have not grown a whole lot in 50 years.
And we are experiencing a little growth, right?
I think this work from home could really change Vrnonia, though. More and more people can work remotely and that's been the biggest, people don't like driving the icy roads and so far to Portland or Hillsboro or Beaufort. I think there is a chance that we could see more growth in the next 10 years than we're used to see.
Yeah.
Potential.
Yeah, I think all of them answers partly on growth and just balancing what we currently have and the small town feel and charm and our natural resources with understanding that growth is going to happen and it may not happen as fast as other places, but I think that they all have responsible answers and an understanding of growth and how to kind of manage that the best we can, you know, and, you know, not, not take away the things that are, make this place a positive and attractive place to be, so. Yeah.
Then you got, then you got Donald that I feel has lived here, what, his whole life or growing his life?
He's in 56 years, so, yeah, wherever that fits in there.
It's really is, I mean, it's a little cliche, but it's hard to take away from that. I mean, he's been here, he's volunteered, he's been on committees, he has a lot of knowledge on infrastructure, which we have issues with. We know he would make a great candidate, or a great councillor. There's no question about that. He was a little short on the answers, that's just the way he is. Sometimes he just said yes or no, or I don't have an answer for that right now. So I think Donald's was the quickest interview we had, but, and there's nothing wrong with the direct answer. It's refreshing to get a direct answer.
Yep.
Doesn't have to be 20 minutes long, it can just be one sentence. So that was, to me, that was a little refreshing, just a yes or no, or I don't know, sometimes.
Maybe if you get him on here, you can shorten up these meetings that you guys have.
I'd have to shut up.
Some short, direct answers.
For me, I, I looked at all four, they all were really good candidates. They all seemed to have a lot to offer. Susan has quite a bit of experience, you know? I looked at, at that. I was sitting here and in Charisse's interview and I was thinking, wow, she's the future of Vrnonia. She is, I call her a millennial, but she's a top of the millennial, she's young, youth. And that's what really Vrnonia needs, somebody young like that to, to be willing to learn right now from us and continue on and carry on the torch. I kind of liked Dale, I was kind of pleasantly surprised with her interview. Donnie, he knows how to fix things. That's all he's done all his life, is fix things. And he's done a really good job of fixing things. He's smart, he's got experience in the, in the city. He, more than any other candidate, sits in the back row at every council meeting.
Yep.
He's involved, he wants, he's generally concerned what we do here. I watched Charlie, he took over, he was asked to replace.
Brad?
Well, my mind went blank.
Ray Martin?
We just lost her.
Eileen.
Eileen, as council president, he willingly took that on. I watched him chair our meetings, about three of them now. He's fantastic. He chairs a meeting like better than I'm a mayor. He's, he's, does good work. He's precise, he's considerate, he listens. He gave a great interview today, I thought.
Yeah. A little weak in certain areas, but that's.
But the one thing that I got from him, he's willing to learn. And, you know, he's, he's, was in the army for 30 some years, got three master's degrees. I mean, he, he loves to learn.
Yeah, absolutely.
This is a tough one.
Yeah, he would make, I mean, it's gonna take a little bit to get him up to speed, but he would be a fine councillor. And in fact, I encourage him also, if he doesn't get picked today, don't take it personal and engage in some online meetings, catch up and get on a budget committee or something, or get the budget, start reading it and, and, and run, you know, or, or get on a committee, you know, and start engaging in the political process a little bit. He would also be, so you're right, they're all, they all have their strengths, which everybody does, obviously. I mean, there's very few that you'd probably say absolutely no way, but there, there are some out there.
And that was something we talked about right at the beginning was, you know, do we have a, a line of, you know, either they're qualified or they're not qualified? And then we kind of talked about that, but we didn't feel like any of them were not qualified. We, we sort of just skipped over that step because it was clear that all of them had an interest in the city, they could, could do the job if that's who was chosen and they would learn and they'd get better. Some of them would benefit from some time, some kind of a city committee, just a little better understanding of how the city operates, or they're up there making policy decisions. That's a little bit of a concern, but, but they're only one vote too, so, you know, eventually they'll figure it out.
So if you ask me who I'm leaning toward, I'll tell you. Just for the fact that I know this person could slide right in, knows quite a bit about the city and everybody gets along with, I think, fairly good with, I think Donald Nora would make an excellent councillor.
I'm gonna fall back to that vote for change. Sorry, I'm stealing your mic, that's fine. No problem with Donnie whatsoever. My problem is maybe optics. Kind of looks like the good old boys club there at that point, you know, there's, we could be five of us older guys in town. I don't think there's anything wrong with the new fresh breath of air. We need the female perspective on the council. And, and I think somebody younger, that demographic, so I'm gonna stick Charisse.
Okay, wants to check a box, I understand that. What do you think?
I think they're all extremely well qualified. I don't think there's any denying that each one would bring a strength. I can't help but agree that fresh youth, a different perspective would definitely be provided by Charisse. I agree Donald would be an excellent choice. I, I've known him for years, he's got integrity, he's, he's a problem solver, he knows a lot about the city, he knows more about the city than I do. Susan has a lot of experience. She's got expertise and communication things online and that kind of stuff. On the other hand, wow, what a, a resource he is. I mean, I was impressed by the fact that he's, he's not just educated, he's smart. And I mean, you, you can have all kinds of degrees and be dumber than a doorknob, but he's got degrees and he's smart, which that's a nice combination to have. It, it is really hard to see, I mean, we're gonna have a time choosing somebody here because like you guys said, they're all qualified, they're all potentially great candidates. But, but the bottom line is who's gonna bring the most to the council? That's.
But, but the bottom line is who's gonna bring the most to the council, that's. I think Charles would bring the most to the council. Even though I like all four of them. But, I mean, it's, it's hard to vote against somebody when you like them. And they all have great qualities, but I see Charles as potentially the strongest candidate because of his background, dealing with tough situations, being a military officer. Puts a person in a position where they have to make command decisions right now and as he stated, life and death. I'm gonna go with Charles.
I see your point, because he checks all kinds of boxes, veteran.
Yeah.
Education. Businessperson in Vernonia, which historically we used to have quite a bit of business representation on council, which I don't know if we've had from the business community. Well, we did have Mario, I don't know about who else before that, but I think he is smart, I think you're right, and I think he definitely has great potential. I thought he was really sincere, even in the questions that he didn't know how to answer.
He said one time he, he didn't have an answer.
He talked a lot about integrity, which I liked. So I can definitely see why he would be your first pick.
They're all great, I mean, they're all good.
So Mayor, before you speak, if I can just, I will just remind you that your citizen panel ranked him last of the four candidates. Just share that with you.
Yeah, no, I'm well aware of that. I'm well aware of that. I think we all are.
So it's up to me, huh? Or just kind of get what you're feeling?
Well, we're, just throw it out right now.
Right now, we, there's no deciding vote.
And Susan, then everybody's got one vote. Sorry, you voted for Donald?
Yes.
Or you said Donald?
Yeah, I, I just said if you, if you want someone to really step in and get along with everybody and smoothly cruise, my choice was Donald. And he does sit back there and he does put a lot of effort into how many other citizens have been here in person. And all his, all of his committee volunteerism and hours. So it proves to me that he really has a vested interest in the city on that aspect. And any answered questions, he, he's pretty good at direct answering yes or no, so I like that too. But I'm not arguing with Webb's point, I'm not arguing with Counselor Williams' point. I think everybody has valid points here, so.
Absolutely. You guys may also, just I'll throw it out, consider doing what we did, which was if each of you ranked them in order and see what that score, I mean, that doesn't have to be a binding decision, but it might give you a sense of, you know, if, if you had him first, but you had him fourth, you know, and then, you know, it just gives you a sense of where you all ranked them. We had real consensus on that, it was pretty clear for us, but as you guys are going around, we've now heard three different choices for first, where we had pretty choices of the same, maybe some kind of a ranked choice and just give you some perspective on how you all felt about them. Just throwing it out as an idea, you guys could do, obviously, you're doing what you.
We're just doing the roundtable, we'll see what the mayor has.
Well, I.
We didn't get the chance to talk about them in between, okay? That's kind of what we're doing right now. And we're doing it in front of you guys that have already made up your minds.
Yeah, I have that.
To be very honest with you, I haven't really decided right now who I want to pick. I kind of want to think about it a little bit more, I want, I want to discuss with the council a little bit more. You know, when it comes to me, I'm almost ready to borrow Brent's hat and draw a number. Draw names out of it, you know, that's where I'm at. I, I really want to think about it a little bit more before I come and pick a person, because I just don't know right now. That's being honest.
Go back to this end of the table, start over.
I mean, are we, are we actually choosing someone right now?
We're discussing, and then somebody's gonna make a motion eventually.
Yeah.
I mean, are you that far out that you don't want to make a decision today?
No, I.
Or do you want to work through the process?
Close, but you know, I, I was listening to your statement and I felt the same way with Sharice. And.
I could go two or three different.
You know, I, I, I could go that way. And I felt it in the interview and it surprised me.
Yeah.
And, and then the last one was, was Charlie and I, I just saw it completely different than how you guys saw it. Because I've sat in some meetings he's run and I've talked to him a little bit and just looking at his application and his history and his qualifications and, you know, he says some really good things in his interview, how he's willing to learn and he compared, he really said, had a good answer with the homeless and the impoverished and getting them involved and, you know, he, he had a lot of good answers and he. So I, I think he would be a really good asset to our city council. Donnie, I, Donnie and then I could still see him sitting in the back row at every council meeting and so.
I'd like to see, personally, I think Donnie would be a good fill-in for us and I'd like to see, I'd like to see Charles and Sharice. I hope I pronounced that right.
Sharice.
Sharice. Pay a little bit more attention to the, some of the meetings, go back and watch them and maybe, you know, like I've told them and yeah, a little budget stuff, you can just get the book and go through it and kind of get a feel for where we're at with money and stuff and, and run, I mean, there's an election coming up in, in a year and a half. But I just felt like, I think Donnie's somebody that, like I said, I think he could just slide right in there and be a, a pretty smooth person that I think everybody gets along with and I know he knows quite a bit about the city. But I, I think Charlie's an excellent candidate too, I think they're all excellent candidates and I like your point. I thought the same thing, wow, she, uh, she impressed me, uh, marketing skills would be probably something that could be very helpful in certain aspects. She's not afraid to come in here and sit down with people quite a bit older than her, most of us, and, and go through this process. And I, I'm definitely not opposed to a different point of view and a younger point, what is a valid point. We can get stuck in a rut and, my gosh, this is the way we've always done things here and then you hear a different perspective and it can really help, so. Yeah. I can toss it both ways there. All three, you know, all the candidates really, I mean, there's nobody that we could pick that would be bad per se. But it seems like, Grant, you're still with Charles as your first pick.
He's my first pick.
And I'm not against Charles at all, put it that way. I just think Donnie edges him out for his commitment over the multiple, multiple years to the town and his knowledge of public works, I think. Public works is an area that a lot of us struggle to know, including myself. Of the way it works and the challenges of some of the systems around town, I know Dale's real good on that.
And he's been on the.
Plus he knows the flavor of the community from a long time, which, you know, it's not necessary, but it does help, I think, in certain aspects, he knows a lot of people too, so.
Been on the budget committee the last three years, I believe.
Right, and so, you know, Susan, obviously, she's been before lots of committees. Sometimes she is hard to get along with, to be honest, she can be a nitpicker. I don't know if she felt, I don't know if I was really treated welcoming by her, to be honest with you. She can be a real, this is the rules we're gonna follow and sometimes it can create tensions, to be honest with you. She can send emails and you're like, wow, where'd that come from? Oh, I guess that is a rule or whatever, but she definitely has the skill set to do the job. If she ran again, she'd probably get elected. If she served up here, she'd do a fine job, she's really prepared. Most of the time, I would say probably 99, probably 100% of the time. So I can see why she's your number one pick. But I'm not against change, I've said that before, the voters did vote for change and I do keep that in the back of my mind. If we always kept the same people, where would we be in government as a whole? The government's supposed to be for the people, of the people, not certain people. So that's kind of why I'm at on that, I guess. You, you, you got a valid concern on there can be tensions within council. Some people roll with it a little better than others. I'm a little concerned about time commitments. I mean, she's on the school board, Susan is, she signed up for quite a few of the committees, I just watched, I watched the last school board meeting. And that thought was going through my mind and it was like, man, she's making a lot of commitments there and then there's gonna be time. You're starting to juggle a lot of things and this is a big commitment. That was the other thing that I was kind of looking for in the candidate, is somebody that has a flexible schedule, somebody that's self-employed. Roy Fitzpatrick, you know, especially Sharice had a good answer. I mean, she basically would make her schedule around. Didn't sound like that would be an issue at all. Donnie, the same, although I could see there could be some issues there, I mean, if he had something thrown down, he's really trying to get it fixed, he'd say, you know, step up and he'd have to, you know, he's making the commitment. And so I can't doubt that.
That's a valid concern though.
And, and of course, Charles, I mean, he's self-employed, so he's, he's got the time to do the job. I kind of like Scott's idea, I mean, we kind of seem to be a little bit of an impasse here. Maybe if we did score, rank ours one through four, that's definitely compile and kind of give us some idea of where we're at, we're gonna be back to the same place.
I think it would change anything.
Well, but somebody.
I think it would, because.
You're gonna have them ranked in, in order that you as a body not saying, I want this person, I want this person, I want this person. You get a cumulative number that says this is the person that rose to the top based on how we thought all of them.
Both score wins. I think it's coming down to Donnie or Charles, it's kind of what I'm hearing. I don't, I don't know what everybody, I don't know what everybody, nobody's talking about their number two.
Although I'm not sure, because I mean, I'm still hearing Sharice's name, I mean, I.
I think everybody thinks they were really impressed with that young one.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, and I just wanted to say again, like, I mean, yes, we ranked them and, you know, number four doesn't necessarily mean we're trying to discount.
Somebody's gotta be four, right?
Yes, someone has to be four and, and like I said, I mean, even though Susan came to the top for us quite clearly, it, it doesn't mean that it still wasn't a decision to seriously try and, 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 and very much saw all of the good qualities and we've said it repeatedly and I just want to say it again, we do think that any one of these people that does apply you know.
Well, I appreciate you guys ranking them one through four, but I personally don't want to do that, because I think they're all good candidates and I don't want someone, I don't want them to watch this and say, oh wow, I got a number four from council, I'm giving up, because I don't want any of them to give up. I really hope, honestly hope they stay engaged and get involved in Vernonia, because they seem to want to. We have a lack of that in this town, be it on a good committee or joining council or running for election, it's always good to have a choice.
Right.
Many, many years there was no choices on voting, because I got the balance.
Yeah, and I just think that because there's such diverse answers from each of you, that, I mean, each of you kind of have your own person, so I, that's why I think the suggestion of scoring, it's not necessarily to put someone in last place, it's just to say, this is how we individually kind of score and then that person comes to the top instead of, like, I'm just saying for efficiency, but you don't have to do that, obviously, if, if not. It might as well not, but it could be that you have your one and two, because they're like a point apart. Two people get the same score, and you're maybe between the top two, that came from the, from the whole body. That's the only reason that, kind of, it helps you guys to kind of.
Start narrowing.
Narrow, otherwise it's your Sharice, your Donald, your Charles.
Yeah, and then it.
You're changing my mind.
I've, I've heard two Charleses though. So right now.
The mayor never said who we.
No, I, and I didn't.
He's not committed.
But I, I, I will right now if you want me to.
Sure.
I choose a guy that's always sitting in the back of the room.
All right, I make a motion that we appoint Donnie Norman as the intern or as the, uh.
No more discussion?
No, well, I'm just gonna make up, I'm gonna make up. Let me start over, I make a motion that we appoint Donnie Norman to city council.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second's been made, would you call the role, please, Stephanie?
Dylan.
I'm gonna say Nate.
Jericho.
I'll say aye.
Pick over.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. There it's done. Nothing against you, Don, I just wanted to through the process. You're not related to Donnie, are you?
He grew up next door.
Oh, okay. Just checking, you're related to half the town. This is not. Again, I think the panel.
Not easy. Not, but we made it.
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Now don't get discouraged. Make the game. I was doing that for you, you know.
Quick rash decision.
No, it's, it's not. Yeah, print that, please, quick decision.
Grant, I apologize, I apologize for saying about Charles, I thought that, I was thinking that you had said Charles.
Bye guys, thank you.
And I sensed you guys were going Charles and I just wanted to point out.
Oh.
Do we want to?
I think you're all, I.
Oh, sorry.
Do you want to during the meeting or do you guys want to keep meeting in session?
No, we'll adjourn the meeting at 2:55, meeting adjourned. No, we'll adjourn the meeting at 2:55, meeting adjourned.